And wait a minute, there he is. You're already on top of it. Thank you. All right. I'm going to check in with City Manager Obit and see if the staff, if we're ready to go tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We are ready to go.
All right. Well, with that then, I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular joint meeting of the Katari City Council and the successor agency to the former Katari Community Redevelopment Agent for Tuesday, June 28, 2022. And with that, I'll jump right to number two because we have a rather full agenda tonight and ask our city clerk if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
Here. All right. And before we move on, I'm going to ask the city manager if he could take just a moment and introduce the members of the staff who are joining us tonight.
Mayor, members of the council, so myself, Damian Obit, city manager, of course. We also have Michael Parrish here, our Chief of Police, Angela Quarter, our Director of Administrative Services, Craig Scott, our Director of Public Works, City Engineer, Noah House, our Director of Community Development. We also have JP Harry here, who is our senior planner, and then John Barker, our city attorney. And then last but not least, we have Kevin Patterson, our Deputy City Clerk, and Carrie Baham. And that is it, Mayor.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. And next I will ask everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to item number four. This is an action item, and this is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. So I'll begin by asking first if there's any additions or corrections to the minutes from the council.
Mayor, sorry, there's no minutes attached in this item.
That's going to make that real easy for the council. Thank you. This is what happens when you have an 880-page package. All right. So with that, then we move right to item five, which is a little reading for me. We have some announcements tonight, and I will ask you to bear with me. And we'll begin with a meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, which where the city council will consider the item and the citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place in the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members might believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely boxed. Next. Measure us supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details on the web at katari-city.org, all about this. Next. Citizens interested in receiving city of Katari community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or simply by texting your zip code to 888-777. And finally, like always, we'd love to hear. So please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or at info@katari-city.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. And you can continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels, including Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. And this takes us to our next item, which is a proclamation. And we do have a proclamation this week from Zero Waste Sonoma. And this is in support of the North Bay Zero Waste Week. And I will read this, and I believe we have a representative, I believe Ms. Kuslaw is here from Zero Waste to speak as well. So I'll begin by this. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Katari in support of North Bay Zero Waste Week, July 24 through 30, 2022. Whereas the City of Katari is a member of the Zero Waste Sonoma, ZWS, which is a joint powers authority. The mission of the ZWS is waste diversion required by state law AB 939. ZWS's programs include hazardous house household hazardous waste, composting, zero waste planning, policy and education. And whereas the U.S. EPA has estimated that 50% of all greenhouse gas emissions are caused by the extraction, production, transportation, and use of goods, including food, products, and packaging. And that zero waste minimizes GHD production and therefore supports Sonoma County's climate initiative. And whereas in 2020, Sonoma County residents and businesses sent 423, 648.58 tons to the landfill, generating approximately 105,000 tons of carbon dioxide. That was 2020, equivalent from decomposing organic matter. And whereas the Shortlift Climate Pollution Reduction Act of 2016, SB 138883, requires a 20% reduction of edible food waste by 2025 and a 40% reduction in methane levels by 2030. And whereas the jurisdictions in Sonoma County have collectively adopted regional goals for waste reduction, reuse, and recycle. These goals are stated from the county-wide Integrated Waste Management Plan as well as in the Sonoma County Regional Climate Action. Whereas the Sonoma County Central landfill, a very valuable resource worth preserving, has a remaining capacity of 23 years. And whereas zero waste principles, in accordance with Cal Recycles, California Department of Resources Recycling Recovery Zero Waste Hierarchy, promotes the highest and best use of materials, emphasizing a closed-loop system of production and consumption, and move in a logical increments, increments towards the goal of reducing waste generation and landfill disposal by more than 90% through improving downstream reuse and recycling end-of-life products and materials to ensure their highest and best use. By pursuing upstream redesign and strategies to reduce the volume and toxicity of discarded products and materials and promote less wasteful lifestyles, fostering and supporting the use of discarded products and materials to simulate and drive local economic workforce development. And finally, by preserving land for sustainable development and green industry infrastructure. And whereas a resource recovery-based economy will create and sustain more productive, meaningful jobs than a disposal-based economy. And whereas the City of Katari has a leadership role by setting zero waste as a goal and on September 10, 2019, adopted a zero waste resolution that sets a goal of zero waste by 2030. But now, therefore, being proclaimed on this 20th day of June 2022 by the City of Katari, the City Council of the City of Katari, that the city encourages the pursuit of zero waste as a long-term goal in order to eliminate waste and pollution in the manufacture, use, storage, and recycling materials. This goal can be achieved through action plans and measures to significantly reduce waste and pollution. These measures will include encouragement of residents, businesses, and agencies to judiciously use, reuse, and recycle materials and motivation of businesses to manufacture and market less toxic and more durable, repairable, reusable, recycled, and recyclable products. And now, therefore, the City Council, the City of Katari, does hereby proclaim July 24 through the 30th of 2022, Zero Waste Week. So with that, I will ask if our representative from Zero Waste would like to expand on that and have any words to share with us tonight. And welcome her.
Thank you. I want to thank the City of Katari on behalf of Zero Waste Sonoma. This acknowledgement of the inaugural week of zero waste action is meaningful and appreciated. Zero Waste Sonoma, Recology, Sonoma Marin, Saluna Outreach Solutions, Sonoma Water, UCCE Master Food Preservers and Master Composters, the Reuse Alliance, Zero Waste USA, Sonoma County Library, and Sommo Village have been working together with many other community partners to offer a full week of events throughout Sonoma County, July 24 through the 30th. I invite all to visit zerowastnorthbay.org to see the full event listing and register for the symposium. Thank you.
And thank you for taking time to be here tonight and for all the work you do in this rather important area. I'll first check with the council and see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments they'd like to make. And if not, then I will, since we have had a little back and forth and read some proclamations, this is not an action item. But we will open to public comment right after the vice mayor has a chance to make a comment because I see her hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the staff at Zero Waste for putting together this week. I know that a lot of people work very hard together. This is the inaugural week, and there is a lot of activities, so please check them out. And I would also like to welcome Catherine. She's one of our newest members to the staff, and thank you for being here. And please check out all the things that will be going on during that week. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. With that, if we could ask our deputy city clerk to check and see if we have any public comments in mind on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, then we're bringing it back to the council. We're moving next to our next item, which is item seven. This is approval of the final agenda. This is two as an action item. So I'll simply begin by asking the city manager if we have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. No proposed changes tonight.
All right. Now, this is largely ministerial, but since it's listed as an action item, I will ask to see if we have any public comments.
If anybody would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay. Then without any objection from my colleagues in the council, the final agenda is approved. And we can move on to item eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And once again, please bear with me. I have a paragraph to read to. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items or item listed on the consent calendar or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to the city council policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And as always, the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I'll ask our deputy city clerk if we have any citizens' business or consent calendar comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay. So this then takes us to our consent calendar. We have nine items, A through I. Excuse me. And I'll begin tonight by asking if any council member wishes to pull any item. And seeing no hands, then I will look to see if somebody would like to move passing this and somebody would like to second it.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Harvey. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ford. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. All right. That takes us through quite a bit and brings us to item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. And I'll ask if any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to propose for a future agenda item tonight. All right. I'm not seeing anything. I do have something I'd like to bring forward. As we all do now, I have gone through the city manager process, and the item that I want to suggest is unfortunately a little large and a little complex to currently fit in right now. So it will have to be added to the future, to the next available budget or mid-year hearing, perhaps longer. But basically, what I want to ask for us to consider tonight is that we revisit Katari's mobile home park rent stabilization ordinance. Very briefly, not to get deeply into it, but that currently we do have a rent stabilization ordinance, which we've had for many years now. And it's based on basically holding this price to the cost of living increase of San Francisco CPI, 100% of it. But interestingly enough, I recently found that even San Francisco, who also has a rent stabilization ordinance, doesn't use 100% of their CPI. They use 75%. And this was brought to my attention by one of our colleagues in the county, from the City of Santa Rosa, whose city discussed this during their housing element earlier this year and is calling calling out, making the change to moving their housing ordinance to 75%. Lot of reasons for that, which I won't get into tonight, but I think we should too. Many good reasons for this, to support it. One reason I will, is not my major motivation, but it's worth mentioning, this may also be part or useful for our housing element action to protect lower-cost housing availability. So there's that as well. So at any rate, I just want to ask for that. And if there's no objection, then that can go in back burner. And I suspect by the time we see it, I won't be here with you. I don't think Councilmember Moore will either. But I hope you'll take a good look at that, and hopefully we can do something to help help in this one area of Katari where we have not been able to do something for some years. So I'm not, I'm seeing nodding heads. I'm not seeing any hands go up. I'm seeing thumbs up. That all sounds good. And Mr. Moore, I see your hand up. Is that a thumbs up or is there something you wanted to briefly say?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. I was just going to say that I would also support an agenda item on that as well.
Very good. Well, thank you, council. So, so and apologies to staff. That's another one, a big thing put in your lap, but we'll have some serious help from Santa Rosa. And you certainly should have all the time necessary to deal with. So hopefully that will work well. So that brings us next to our public hearings, of which we have four tonight. And we'll begin with our first one, which is item 11A. And this is a public hearing on a potential gas station fossil fuel ban for the City of Katari. So I'll ask if we could have our staff report on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman, members of the council. My name is JP Harry. I'm a senior planner with the City of Katari. Thank you, Mayor Landman, members of the council. My name is JP Harrys. I'm a senior player with the city of Kattati. And tonight is agenda item eleven A begins on package page two oh two. And as the mayor noted, this is a consideration of an ordinance that would prohibit fossil fuel sales for vehicles. Otherwise known as like a gas station ban. Next slide, please. Before I get into details, let me just tell you what the proposed ordinance does. It would prohibit new and expanded service station. Infrastructure that stores, conveys and dispenses fossil fuels to vehicles. It would limit existing service station modifications to those that would one improve soil groundwater and stormwater quality. Improve traffic safety. Enable battery charging stations. And provide for other commercial uses that are not related to fossil fuel sales, something like convenience store, for example. Excuse me, it also clarifies the approval requirements and permissible locations for battery charging stations, which is essentially citywide, which we'll discuss. And it defines specialized terms, including an amendment to the the land use title service station. That to clarify that they are limited only to non fossil fuel sales. Next slide, please. So just some by way of backgrounds and local actions. That that caused us to bring this ordinance forward first of all. And importantly, from two thousand one through two thousand twenty two, the city has been. Extremely assertive in its in its actions and goals and strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And on page two seventy of your packet, I have an exhibit that goes through a laundry list of items like this city is undertaken. And I don't even think the list is complete, but it but it's it's a good shot and. And anyway, it's something to be proud of. And then in March twenty twenty one, Petaluma gained pretty much international news recognition because of a. Their ban on future gas stations. As far as we know, it's the first in the nation to do so. Following that, there is voiced a lot of interest from a lot of other jurisdictions and Kattati included. That they also wanted to see similar proposals come before in the city council. And and part of that was resulted in an R CPA with the Regional Climate Protection Authority of Sonoma County. Adopted resolution twenty twenty one dash zero zero three. In September of twenty one, and that recommended that the county and all incorporated jurisdictions. Cease processing of applications for and permitting of new gas stations. Or expansions of existing gas stations in their local jurisdictions. Following that meeting during a city council discussion on community development priorities and commitments. The city council affirmed that they wanted to have a gas station ban as it was a priority for the council. For this fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two. And then and then just just so that you're aware, others, local north bay communities such as Sabasible, Rona Park, Calistoga and American Canyon. Have also gone down this path of adopting gas station bans. Next slide, please. What this ordinance does is it targets the transportation sector, which is overwhelmingly the largest. Contributor to greenhouse gases. Right now that California has twenty twenty two climate change scoping plan, which is still in its draft form. Is show is showing that transportation impacts statewide. Result in forty percent of the greenhouse gas emissions. In Sonoma County, that rises up to sixty percent. So it's by far the most significant contributor. Of greenhouse gas emissions. And within the city of Kattati, that number is even higher because we don't have fertilizer and livestock. Contributions and our solid waste tends to be caught up in the transportation sector. So transportation is overwhelmingly the largest contributor of greenhouse gas emissions. In the city and is 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 a good area to target for reductions. Next, next slide, please. Just so you're aware, there are five currently five service stations in Kattati and another eleven in Rona Park. So there is abundance of gas station, those those arcs around it show basically a five minute drive from each gas station. And so you could see that there's nobody that is. Burdened by not by not being close to a gas station. We have plenty. And when you get there, the lines are not long. It's very simple to get gas here. It's not a problem. Next slide, please. Additionally, Regional Climate Protection Authority adopted in March of twenty twenty one, the Climate Mobilization Strategy. This is a guidance document for the city. And it has an overall goal of carbon, attaining carbon neutrality by twenty thirty. This is much more aggressive than the state's goal, current state goal, which is twenty forty five. And then within that strategy, an important strategy, strategy four, which is EV access for all partnership and it includes. I think it has four. Real objectives, but two of them are really salient for tonight. And that is work with regional partners and local businesses to develop over ten thousand public and workplace charging stations in Sonoma County by twenty twenty seven. And two. The most important, develop a package of local ordinances and other actions to address remaining permitting barriers for installing charging. Equipment while also limiting permitting of new fossil fuel infrastructure. This ordinance is also consistent with two statewide executive orders, executive order B forty eight eighteen, which was signed by the governor in twenty eighteen. Calls for five million zero emission vehicles on California roads by twenty thirty. Two hundred hydrogen stations, two hundred and fifty thousand zero emission vehicle chargers, including ten thousand direct. Current fast chargers by twenty twenty five. It's also supports executive order N seventy nine twenty, signed by Governor Newsom in twenty, September of twenty twenty. And that targets carbon neutrality by twenty forty five. And wants one hundred percent of in-state sales of new passenger vehicles to be zero emission by twenty thirty five. And one hundred percent of medium and heavy duty vehicles to be zero mission by twenty forty five. Excuse me, for all operations where feasible and twenty thirty five for drayage trucks, which are just short distance trucking. Next slide, please. Our general plan includes a couple of elements that are important to this, objective C I. Three A, which is part of the circulation element, reduce is to reduce the levels of greenhouse gas. Emissions created by automobile traffic in Kattati. Also conservation element includes objective con to be, which is to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases from city operations and community sources. And then also we do have a climate action plan, which is climate action twenty twenty and beyond. And includes two goals that are important for tonight, which is goal five is encourage a shift toward lower carbon transportation options. And goal seven, which is encourage a shift toward low carbon fuels and vehicles and equipment. Next slide, please. So now getting into kind of the meat. We don't have a definition for gas station. We we use the the term service station and this is the definition. It means. Service station means a retail business selling gasoline and or other motor vehicle fuels and related products. And then we're allowed by article two, it can also have other businesses associated such as a service station or vehicle services. And presently, gas service stations are allowed with use permit approval. In four different zoning districts within the city, CE, which is the commercial East Kattati. Which is the basically the commercial corridor along East Kattati Avenue. CG, which is commercial Gravenstein Highway, same thing, commercial corridor along Gravenstein Highway. Downtown Commercial, which is kind of a smattering of about twelve separate. Parcels that really surround the named streets around La Plaza, so along Charles and William. And I didn't think the other one, Henry Street, I believe also. There's only about a dozen parcels that make up that name. I believe, I'm not sure why they weren't incorporated into the downtown specific plan, but they weren't and they they remain there. And then we have Commerce Avenue, which is a district within the downtown specific plan. And it's only those businesses. From El Ranchito, right where Commerce Avenue starts north to the the border with Rona Park. So it kind of ends at the splash car wash there. So those are where service stations are currently permitted. Next slide, please. And this is a, this is an image. It's a partial map of Kattati. CG district is not well shown in here, but it, you know, that's the orange side. The light pink, excuse me, the light purple at the top is the CA district. And it's hard to see, but the pink around the named streets of William. And Hen, yeah, Henry and Charles are where those CD parcels are located. And then, of course, there's the the red CE along. East Kattati Avenue. Next slide, please. In addition to the zoning, there is a. Fairly decent section on on how the standards for service stations and that includes permit and application requirements. The limitations on locations. Site requirements, site planning standards, building design standards, facility operating standards. Which kind of accessory uses are allowed? And requirements for removal of the tanks and pumps upon cessation of use or change in use. And we are proposing an amendment to this section, which we'll discuss in a moment. Okay, next slide, please. So the first thing that the ordinance does is it proposes to change the definition of service station to service station. Non fossil fuel sales emphatically. And which would means a retail business and then that provides electrical charging or fueling for vehicles, but does not include the sale of fossil fuels. New or expanded facilities to store, convey or dispense fossil fuels are prohibited. And then we highlight where allowed, a service station may also include vehicle services, convenience stores and or other commercial uses. Which are separately defined and regulated in in the code as separate land use types. So you can see the strikeout, so essentially it strikes out the gasoline sales and 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 makes it. An affirmative statement that that fossil fuels are not allowed. Next slide, please. It also adds a large section to. Section forty two, one eighty, seventeen point forty two, one eighty, excuse me. Which which again reiterates that the sale of fossil fuels for internal combustion engines is prohibited. And it discusses what that means and that includes pretty much all fossil fuels and gasoline, diesel, compressed natural gas, high ethanol blends, propane. Liquified petroleum gas. And then it makes, and then it describes what what can be done at service stations. So you can make modifications to improve the environment through soil, water, stormwater improvements. And and of course, if there's any remediation that needs to be done, you can make changes to to accomplish that. Modifications to improve traffic safety or pedestrian or any kind of vehicle and pedestrian improvements. And of course, if you wanted to add battery charging stations, that would be an allowable action. As well as we would consider. Changes that would incorporate commercial uses into service stations going forward, other other than, you know, the service station itself. And and that would also, and they wouldn't include fossil fuel sales, obviously. Next slide, please. The other thing it does is the ordinance clarifies that charging stations. Currently, there it the there's no, there's nothing in the the land use code that discusses electric vehicle charging stations. So this just clarifies. That they are allowed as a permitted accessory use in all zoning districts, all citywide. There's no district that would be exempt. Or that would be excluded from allowing accessory. Charging stations and that no use permit is required, that the approval is discretionary. This is by state law. Unless there's a public health and safety matter that the building official identifies, they must be approved through a building permit essentially. Next slide, please. It also includes some some new definitions. The electric vehicle charging station is defined. And I will note that this definition is in the Kattati municipal code. It's actually in chapter. Come back to it, I think by fourteen something. It has more of where the building, the building code information is there. We've taken the same definition from that section of the code and brought it forward into the land use code. So there's nothing new there, but we wanted it to be there since it's now part of the part of the the allowable use tables. We need a definition, so we use the definition from chapter fourteen. And and we're clarifying that the fuel dealer, this would be something where, you know, propane sales, for example. That this is not, this ordinance is not intended to target those type of businesses that sell propane. In in bulk, this, but it is simply limited to. Service stations. So that's a fuel dealer would be somebody like McFail, for example. And with which this ordinance is not targeting and we just want to be clear about that. Next slide, please. I have one other moment. Well, and then, so we brought this to the planning commission. And we had, the ordinance looked a little bit different than what is presented tonight and we had a really good discussion. And I also had some discussions with Congas, which is an advocacy group within Sonoma County that. Doesn't want to see future gas stations in Sonoma County. And we worked on a few different ideas and changes to it. So the original ordinance had provisions for fueling hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. Pretty much the public spoke at the planning commission and the planning commission itself did not want to see the new provisions. They kind of prefer that the the ordinance is silent on this issue. There are problems that may present itself with hydrogen fuel cell vehicles and it's probably something we'll look at in the future. But for now, hydrogen fueling is just not a demand here. In fact, there's not a single hydrogen hydrogen fuel cell facility in all of Sonoma County. And I believe only one in in Mill Valley and Marin County, so just not, they're just an exotic thing at this point. We had the the originally, we were going to define staff proposed to define service station. With the parenthetical alternative fuels only, the commission's preference was service station, non fossil fuel sales. There is some nuance in this, but we understood it and we were happy to make that change. And then at the same time, when we were looking at the zoning districts where gas stations were allowed or service stations. CD just struck us, it it was just an odd one because there's not a single parcel of those that I mentioned. That would be eligible to build a gas station because of the other restrictions on location, primarily location requirements. So our proposal was to just, well, let's just eliminate it from the CD district since there's no feasible place for it to go anyway. So it's really was part of a cleanup. That we that we attempted to do. However, because of the proximity of certain commissioners, we couldn't get a quorum on that, so we didn't have a recommendation on that. And. And then, but we, I had included it in the draft ordinance that originally went out when our city, our our. City attorney reviewed the draft ordinance. Because we were, we didn't have a recommendation from the planning commission on this particular item and. Their recommendation was to remove it from the ordinance and we have, so the ordinance no longer includes. A provision to eliminate it from the CD district. However, like I said before, there are no eligible parcels within the CD district, so it's kind of moved. And and anyway, they unanimously adopted resolution number PC twenty-two-two-seven, which is on packet page twenty-fourteen, which recommended approval of this ordinance, city council approval of this ordinance with the changes that I've highlighted here. And next slide, please. And so the staff recommendation is city council adoption of the proposed ordinance to provide provisions for electric vehicle charging and to prohibit new or expanded service station facilities that store, convey, or dispense fossil fuels to vehicles. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and hear any comments or changes that you'd like.
Well, thank you very much. I'll take this to the council and see who'd like to begin with questions. And I see a hand from council member Ford, as well as council member Sparks.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. Thanks, JP, for the presentation and for all the work on this. A couple of questions. Do we have any any parcels that have still valid use permits that aren't currently operating as, I'll call them, gas stations?
Should I answer this right away, Mayor? Or would you like?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, is that okay, Mayor Landman?
It would be fine, yes.
Okay, thanks.
The the only one, and I I've done some research into it as part of a zoning research we did for the sale, but the splash car wash right at the northern end of Commerce Avenue used to have fuel pumps. Those were removed, I want to say twenty-eighteen, I I believe they were removed, and that site's under remediation currently. In reviewing it, I didn't find a use permit. I could find a lot of stuff related to the car wash, and I suspect that it's because that use was prior, existed prior to the the city being incorporated.
So, so I'm just trying to get at the question of whether there are any sites that might claim they had existing fuel services and could could reactivate without being banned by this. So maybe that would count as expanded expanded use or something like that that would be banned.
Yeah, well, I think it would, as far as I know, no. I mean, that would be the only one that's really of any kind of question. But again, those pumps have been removed. Our ordinance does include provisions. You know, if you've stopped fuel sales for a certain amount of time, that you cannot reinstall that. Now, well, that would be something that we would have to look at carefully because it may conflict with certain laws regarding the rights that are granted when when you receive a use permit. But if there's any, that would be the one. The other ones are are long extinguished.
Okay, thanks. And one other question about the definition of a EV charging station. I know you just pulled that forward from the building code, but it specifies plug-in electric vehicle, and I'm curious about why there are other potential charging mechanisms besides a plug? And I'm wondering if there's a reason to limit to plug-in electric vehicles. You know, there are, you know, drive-over chargers and things like that that are sort of in development.
Yeah, no, there was no specific reason for it to be that way. And you're right, I did just carry it forward with not not realizing that there might be another way to charge, like a drive-in. Is that like a battery replacement mechanism?
No, no, there are some mechanisms that are actually used by some mass transit where it's a, it's like, it it's a big version of wireless phone chargers. There's there's no plug, but there's. Anyway, you can consider that for a future cleanup. If if any of those technologies come down the line, we'll just remove the words plug-in, I think. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't, you know, and if that came forward, I don't think, I think you'd see us, you know, unless it was something really unusual, we would approve it as if it were any other electric vehicle charging.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ford. Council member Sparks, you're next, followed by Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you. It came up in some questions I had asked to Mr. Harris earlier that there, we do have two gas stations currently in the North Gateway District. So there are two stations that are sort of the non-conforming use right now. So my question is, how would this apply to them in terms of if at some point in the future, if they wanted to to install charging stations and whatnot? Would they be prohibited from doing that? Because the new service station non-fossil fuel category is not an allowed use in that district?
So there there are two service stations located in Northern Gateway, as you mentioned, that are legal non-conforming. If, and 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 you would always have to look at the application, but let's just take, for example, you know, one of these stations, if they wanted to pull out a pump and replace it with electric vehicle charging station, we would absolutely go, you know, allow for that. If they wanted to install vehicle charging stations at any of their parking spaces, we would absolutely approve that kind of change. If they were proposing to really expand the use itself, then that would require much more rigorous, you know, examination on are they expanding a non-conforming use? So it may prevent them from expansions in in land area, but not that would prevent them from, you know, making improvements to their facility, making modifications to their facility, maintaining their facility, as long as it's consistent with with the items that that I presented earlier.
And if, just to make sure I understand correctly, if they if they wanted to rip out all their gas pumps, just put in a huge array of vehicle charging stations that was larger than the gas pumps had been, we would have, we would sort of have to take a real close look at that, is that what you're saying? Since it's not.
Well, I think if it were, I don't know, he's obviously shown up to to also jump in. But if it weren't expanding the area that it's using now, I think I think that would be absolutely fine with us, you know.
Okay, and that, would that approval happen at the at the staff level?
No, probably not, because there'd be, you'd be talking about. I need to be careful. If you're just adding, just adding certain stations to like the existing parking areas, that by law, by state law, those are ministerial approvals. If you're talking about like tearing down the whole facility and, you know, rebuilding something that's within the kind of the same area, then that has to go to planning commission because we don't, at staff, don't have the authority to approve that for the, through design review. So that would have to go to planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey, I believe you have some questions?
Yes, I do. I just want some clarification on the wording in the proposed ordinance. It says service station non-fossil fuel sales means a retail business that provides electrical charging or fueling for vehicles, but does not include the sale of fossil fuels. My question is, does that not negate every station that we have? And all of a sudden, if we approve this, they all of a sudden can no longer sell these fossil fuels as of tomorrow?
No, they they, any any station now can continue with its operation. So it it basically that that particular aspect of their business becomes a legal non-conforming situation. Either they were, hopefully that answered it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so we are not shutting down every gas station in the city by those words?
No, we're not.
Okay, I I did, because the way it reads, it sounds like.
That's certainly not the intention. No, it's 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 to understand that there there's no new or expanded facilities, but.
But it doesn't exactly say that. It it doesn't say that. And that's that's what what concerned me is.
Well.
Later on, it says that.
It would be one of like that, on package page two oh six, for example, where you see B one, this is the section that will discuss what, it falls within the section for service station.
Okay.
And if we want to do some word tweaking, I'm happy to, but it says B one, just right there, new facilities and expansions of existing facilities that store, convey, or dispense fossil fuels shall not be permitted.
Okay, I just.
There's nothing that says they can't do that, and we couldn't do that anyway. They have vested rights to continue with their use, unless we took actions through hearings and due process to change that.
Okay, that was just my concern, the way that was worded. It didn't, it didn't imply that it was only new ones. It just basically said all.
I would think of it something similar. I don't think it says all new and expansion.
Well, it's, it changes the definition of service station. And so if what these people have is a use permit as a service station, we've changed the meaning, does that, that was my only concern is, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we have zero because we've.
We don't, well, it's, that's not the intent. I believe I, unless you have some recommended wording, I believe that it it works. And again, we don't, we don't have the the ability to do that.
Okay, as long as Mr. Barker, who is our attorney, who is, you know, versed in these things, thinks that that will protect the ones that are already there, and the intention is for new ones, then I'll be okay with that. I mean, he is our legal expertise on that, so I would defer to him.
Yeah, I I just, just, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, I did review the ordinance. I I originally had the same concern, and I reviewed it, and I'm comfortable that it it only applies to new new uses and expansions of existing uses. So I'm comfortable that it won't create any issues with the existing users.
Okay, if you're comfortable, I'm comfortable. Then my second question has to do with this whole thing around the CD. You were able to find a map. I could not find a map. I was digging around in the Muni code. And what I did find is the definition for CD. And in the definition in seventeen point two oh point oh three oh B, it really, it defines CD there, but it talks about CD being all the way from Page Street down Old Redwood Highway north to Highway one oh one. So your map that you showed us a picture of is very different than the words that are in the Muni code.
Well, we do have the zoning map, which is the official map. And now you're highlighting probably something that we need to do, go in and amend the the municipal code to be consistent with the zoning map, which is which is adopted. The zoning map is not included in the municipal code. It's a separate separate document, and you can find it on our website within the community development area. That's probably the best place to get it. Of course, we have maps in in the office as well.
Right, right. And I couldn't, that was a beautiful map that you showed in your presentation, so thank you for that. So I think then, as far as CD is concerned, I think that we need to address the wording in seventeen twenty point oh three oh B because it it definitely does not match the picture that you showed.
Vice Mayor, can I recommend that we do that as a separate action?
Sure, absolutely. I just wanted to to point that out because when I went kind of looking for this, what I was concerned about were the two, the two stations that reside on Old Redwood Highway. If all of a sudden, we were basically closing them down because they were in what the words say are the CD.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, then that's all all my questions for right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Council member Moore.
Here, Mayor Landman. Thank you, Mr. Harris. I have a question. Can we elaborate a little bit more on why we are not allowing for hydrogen fuel cells at stations?
We're not prohibiting it. There was, and you may hear from some of the public later, there, we did include some provisions for it. It was just that, you know, that would be an allowable use. There was a concern that we were trying to do, that we're conflating things that we wanted to promote with actions that we, that just rather than targeting the fossil fuels. There is also concern that we would be encouraging hydrogen fuel fueling in the area, and that might promote the wrong type of vehicles. Also, hydrogen fuel is sourced from fossil fuels almost entirely. It is sourced from natural gas, which wasn't consistent with what members of Congas and some of the other members of the public wanted to see, at least be vocal about it. So the recommendation was to just be silent with respect to hydrogen fuel cell. And that that's, that's the reasons right there.
So so you're indicating that hydrogen fuel cell vehicles can contribute to the greenhouse gas concerns?
The source, the vehicles themselves are zero emission vehicles. They're they're, they use hydrogen fuel cells to power an electric motor. But the generation of the hydrogen is almost, almost always comes from natural gas. There are ways to produce hydrogen, but not without doing that. You can crack water, for example, but that's not done at the commercial scale.
Okay, I guess it can be readdressed down the road if that becomes a concern, lack of those facilities.
Yeah, I think that was why we were willing to let it go at staff level was because it's just not a pressing issue for us right now. We included it because there's really only two zero types of zero emission vehicles in commercial production, which are hydrogen fuel cell, very, very, very small percentage, and then electric battery charge vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. I'm not seeing any hands up right now, so I will close that. I'll remind the council, once again, I am stuck running this meeting through a phone because my city device Wi-Fi is divided not to play with us tonight. It perhaps felt that the agenda was too long, I just don't know. So at any rate, bear with me, and if you need to speak and I can't see you, please feel free to speak up. And with that, since we've done our round of questions, I'd like to now open the public hearing and ask the city clerk to open it to comments from the public.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. I'm the co-coordinator of the Coalition Opposing New Gas Stations, Congas, and a resident of Cattati. And I'd like to thank the staff, JP Harris particularly, for doing so much detailed research and the fantastic presentation. My co-coordinator, Woody Hastings, I hope he's going to speak because he is much more knowledgeable about hydrogen and the reasons why that was not included. I I think this is a fabulous ordinance, and I would just urge you, encourage you, hope that you will pass it exactly as it is with no changes. There was a lot of discussion about details at the planning commission level, and I think a lot of the questions and concerns got got ironed out then. And there are so many good reasons to say no more new gas stations. And yeah, it's only about the new ones and existing ones expanding, and this wouldn't impact existing ones at all. Just just want to say a couple of things that weren't mentioned was the pollution that gas station cause in terms of air pollution. They always leak, there's always problems with with leaks and spills getting into waterways. And we do have the abandoned gas station site at the northern end of Cattati, which I think began to be cleaned up in nineteen eighty-nine, and I think that was finished in last year. I mean, it's a long time, and the danger of that one was something to do with water leaking into the, sorry, gasoline drink leaking into the drinking water. So there are other reasons apart from the climate crisis to do this. And in addition, people worldwide are impacted by fossil fuels. Wherever there's drilling and pipelines and processing and transportation, almost always affecting people of color or low-income communities and indigenous people disproportionately. So that's another reason why we think it would be good to to start banning new ones. And the existing ones will will continue as long as there's a need for them. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and please do. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and please do approve the ordinance exactly as it stands. Thank you very much.
Lori Ann Barber, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, um, Lori Ann Barber, resident of Khatari. I want to thank the city for taking up this issue and thanks to the staff for all the work on this. I'm strongly in favor of this ban. On new gas or fossil fuel infrastructure in Khatari. Uh, gas stations are soon to be actually a bad business investment because cars are mandated to be electric by. In California by twenty thirty five, so we wouldn't really want to encourage businesses that weren't going to do well. Um, and we don't need any more gas stations in Khatari right now. As already stated, there's plenty of access and nobody really waits in line to buy gas. Unless maybe you go to Costco. Um, it's important for our city to join the other cities in Sonoma County. In creating the future that we want with less greenhouse gas emissions. Um, as Jenny mentioned, gas stations are polluting and hazardous. As a Khatari citizen. I would not be in favor of adding any more toxic infrastructure. So I support this ban. And I appreciate this as a way for Khatari to meet our climate goals and set an example for other jurisdictions. And really just to help out the climate crisis in general. So again, I'm in support of this ordinance and I thank you for your time.
Richard J. Sanghas, please go ahead.
Hello, um, I am speaking in favor of this ban as well. I think that we are in the transition times. And this is a very appropriate step forward as we move through without it being a radical change. Others have spoken to many of the issues, but I think that the idea of, of a suitable transition is uh, worth mentioning as we go through it. I have seen also um, times when businesses have failed and um, as we just heard, somebody was saying, maybe it's not a good investment. But sometimes people don't realize that. And I would hate to see a bankrupt um, business. Uh, or one that is closed being tried to uh. Be reached out to, to, to help mitigate what's left behind. So um, I would strongly encourage us to move in this direction. I appreciate all the work that so many people have done. Uh, I think it's um, there's been a lot of legwork, a lot of real deliberation here. So I don't think that this is hasty at all. I think um, that it's uh, you know, most of the considerations that would come in have been addressed. So once again, I support the ban. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Very good, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council and see if I have any discussion. From any council members. And I see a hand up from Councilmember Ford. Please go ahead.
Just a, a quick discussion on that CD district issue. I, I'm in favor of not removing it as a permitted use in CD. Um, just because it, the definition of service station no longer includes fossil fuel. Uh, sales and so the, it's not clear to me that the, the same sites are going to be appropriate for. Uh, electric vehicle charging as were appropriate for dispensing gasoline and I. Given that it only applies to a few, few parcels, I don't see a reason to uh, to remove it as an allowed use in that, in that district right now. So I favor approving as the Planning Commission recommended.
All right, thank you. I'll ask the rest of my colleagues if anybody else has any comments for, ask for motion. Not seeing any hands jump up. I'll just quickly say, it is amazing sometimes how quickly preconceptions that we've had. For generations frankly, for years, all our lives perhaps, to just fall away. You know, this whole thing began in Petaluma and my understanding from the people involved in this. The original concept isn't even what we're finally looking at tonight. The idea was that they were dealing with a problematic application. For a gas station down there. And in trying to deal with it, um, one of the best directions appeared to be just flat out. Looking at could we ban all new gas stations? And that's, I think, when the realization came upon, wait a minute. Actually, we have plenty of service station infrastructure. We are very well served and that was like a bolt from the blue. So that's something of interest to me. Uh, very quickly, here we are, less than a year later at this point. We'll probably talk more about that later. But before I ask for a motion, I would like to give credit to Councilmember uh, Ford for being the first among us to very quickly. Recognize the value and the appropriateness of this and bring it to the council. And with that, if there's no other discussion, actually, if I'm going to ask for somebody to move the introduction of this ordinance. I'd like to ask Councilmember Ford if he'd be willing to do that.
I'd be happy to, Mayor Landman. Thanks. I, I would move to uh, introduce an ordinance to prohibit new and expanded service station facilities. That store, convey or dispense fossil fuels.
All right, so now the suspense continues. Do we have a second for that?
I would like to second this motion.
All right, a second from Councilmember Sparks who kept her composure too. Nicely done. So we have a first and a second. Can we have a roll call vote please tonight?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And that's a yes for me too. So this motion carries unanimously. Uh, so we'll see when this comes back. Thank you staff for that. And we move on, we have yet another public hearing. This is item B under public hearings. And this is a public hearing for our lighting and landscape assessment districts uh, to approve, report and authorize assessments. And so I'll ask if we can have our staff report for that, please.
Sure, uh, mayor members of the council, this is Craig Scott, City Engineer, Public Works Director. We go, we um, conduct this process annually. Back in nineteen eight, from nineteen eighty nine to two thousand and three, the city created ten. Landscape and lighting assessment districts as a way of recuperating costs to maintain. The landscaping and the streetlights for development. So, and um. So that is done as part of the lighting and landscaping act of nineteen seventy two, which does require us to go through very strict. Um, annual process. This is the third visit to council for this year. The first was in January. Um, for this year and it was to um, designate the engineer, the city engineer myself, as the engineer of record to prepare the report. And to go ahead and authorize the preparation of the report. In May, um. The cit, the draft report was presented to council and um. A, a resolution of intent to levy the assessment was made as well as setting the public hearing for today. And um, this meeting has been duly noticed and um, we're in good. Everything's lined up to go ahead and receive the, the finalized report and levy the assessments through the resolution. And after, following that, the uh, staff would go ahead and prepare the assessment roll and submit it to the, the county assessor's office. Um, next slide, please. And the next slide. So these are the tens, ten zones. It was uh, originally formed as ten separate districts. Which each required their separate resolution, which became pretty mundane. Uh, someone in the council could attest to. And so I, I think it's four years ago now. We decided, we, we saw a way with, with the uh, the landscape and lighting assessment district code. To combine those districts into a single district with each original district retaining its original qualities. Uh, characteristics, uh, but as zones within that district. Um, we've got Valparaiso, which was the one uh, originally in nineteen eighty nine and then all the way to two thousand and three when Altman Acres. Was formed. And you'll see the asterisks on the last four zones there. That means that the city got a little bit uh. Better at doing this along the way and realized that the cost of utilities and labor and so forth. Would go up over time because of inflation. And so those have the ability to be adjusted each year by. The San Francisco Construction Cost Index. Uh, next slide, please. Here, here's a, a map just showing where these zones are. Um, it also kind of gives you an idea of the relative size. We've got zones from, that have as small, little as fourteen. Houses on it to zones with seventy homes within this assessment district. Within each zone. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, there's a couple of slides here that summarize the um. You know, what, what we're doing, excuse me, with each zone. This one basically says, hey, we do routine maintenance, okay? We, we, we keep up the um, the lands, the streetscape. And make sure we replace broken bulbs, burned out bulbs. Um, and so this slide highlights, hey, what do we do? That's like a little bit beyond that. And so uh, this past year on zone two. We, there's been a longstanding issue with a couple of pretty large redwood trees breaking up the sidewalk and causing tripping hazards. If you remember, we had a barricade there for over a year, if not a year and a half or two years. Um, because the sidewalk was that broken up. And so we did get to that this past year. And one of the trees had to be removed, but we did, were able to salvage the, the tree that's on the corner of Gary Way and Myrtle. Um, both sections of sidewalk were demolished and replaced. And so that is now. Uh, safe for pedestrians to, to go through there. And we did involve the, the residents in that zone. We had a couple of community meetings to see what, what our options were and let everybody know what, what we were considering that this needed to be addressed. Zone eight, Park Meadows, that's McGinnis Circle. Remember uh, three or four years ago, we put in lights. One is shown in the picture there. Um, along the trails, the pathways. And so that was funded by the assessment district. Uh, we built up the res- revenue since the reserve balance since then and we're ready for another capital project. And that is in detachment C of the report. And it's also in our multi-year capital plan that you'll be hearing. Uh, that's wrapped into the budget later on in the presentation. And um. Uh, yes, it's, it's funded by assessment district and because it's a capital project. Um, it, it belongs in that multi-year city capital plan. We, we have prepared the design and um, put it out to bid and we've. Um, selected a contractor for that. This is the project that's combined with Pocket Park Pathways. But we'll keep the, the expenses going to the correct accounts. And um, it, it, for, for the landscaping lighting assessment district, there's the, the pathway with asphalt. That's very bumpy and broken up and split and cracked. Um, that goes from McGinnis to Marshway and then also from McGinnis to the Laguna Bridge. And there's going to be a conform there and the pathway, we've got um, the plan for decomposed granite. Which is what we're seeing around town, across the street from City Hall, uh, West School Street. We just put in that type. It's got a binder in it. So it keeps it very much together and it's, it's holding up well in other applications around the city and it. Where we, we like, it just, it's, it's um, providing a, a real sense of place. When folks are walking around town and say, oh, you know, here's this similar looking pathway, very pleasing to the eye. Um, so we're looking to put that in. And then Centera Way, uh, we did some repairs to the irrigation system and removed a fallen tree. It was windy one day and a branch fell off and so that tree had to be removed or replaced. And I'll, I'll speak to this later. It sounds like a trivial thing, but when these assessment districts only collect about a thousand dollars a year. And they built up rev, reserves of maybe thirteen hundred dollars and you're saying, oh, that's one hundred percent of our annual. Assessment, that's a lot of money. It, it could get pretty much uh, zeroed out when one branch falls off a tree. Or irrigation system needs to be repaired. Uh, and then finally, zone ten, Altman Acres. Uh, so there's a section of streetscape. Um, if you go along Old Redwood Highway just south of Myrtle, down the east side. That streetscape was installed back in two thousand and three and nothing but, yeah, just routine maintenance was done to that. So you'll see tattered uh, weed barrier there and some shrubbery that's looking. Um, diseased or dying. So we're looking to replace the, um, take out the, the molds. In the irrigation and that tattered weed barrier and ref, replace the, the, the foliage, the vegetation. Do new plantings there. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, our first of a couple of summary slides with the, the numbers in them. So this one shows the three, three columns there with the numbers. The twenty one, twenty two is the assessment that was. Um, assessed this past year, okay? And you'll notice for the first six zones, they stay the same. All, all three of those numbers across the columns are the same because again, we, we did not build in that inflation adjustment factor to those zones. So um, I mean, what, what really makes that point is back in nineteen eighty nine. We sort of costed out, hey, this is what it costs to maintain, to pay for water in streetlights, uh, bulbs and everything else. And over thirty years later, those costs have gone up and yeah, um, our assessment has stayed the same for those zones. Um, their middle column is the current maximum assessment and so that applies to the last four zones. Um, the construction cost index is taken from the zones inception to January first, twenty twenty two. Multiplied by that original assessment. And that's the annual assessment we can charge without a protest. So we can hold this public hearing and go ahead and um, assess that charge. And um, we, we choose not to do that. Um, so the third col, the, the final column of numbers there. You can see are quite a bit below the maximum as annual assessment that we are allowed to assess. And we um, increased that, we kind of look at that number and increase that relative to what the year-over-year CCI is. And for this past year, it was nine point two percent. So, so pick, pick your jaws off the floor. It's um, quite, quite a bit of a jump this year in inflation. Realizing that that's a high number, we went ahead and ratcheted it down and capped it at five percent for zone seven and eight. We have an operational deficit for uh, zone nine, Centera Way. So um, we bumped that up to about seven percent. Well, not about, we were proposing seven percent. And zone ten is actually um, increasing its reserves by about. Three to five thousand dollars a year. It's building, it's a very healthy zone. And so I met twice with the HOA there. And listened to what their concerns were. Um, and uh, we, we came to sort of an understanding. That a five percent reduction of their assessment was uh, made sense. And we went a step further and said um, a reserve target of twenty thousand dollars made sense as well. Because we're getting quotes for redoing that landscaping and they're coming in at twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. And so that's only needed every, well, ideally, we, we wouldn't be waiting twelve years. We'd do it every five or six years or so. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so um, we looked at assessments and what their, the relative, relative increase of assessments each year. This is the, the running balance of their reserves. And so again, this is, uh, the concept is. It's a um. It's a safety valve for anything that might go wrong in the, in this zone where we would like to just kind of. Continue to march along each year with a fairly predictable ex, annual expense of maintenance, but things happen, right? Um, sidewalks get cracked up and irrigation systems break and trees fall down. So um. The, the ones that are in the, in the low one or two thousands. Um, they're, they're one instance away from just zeroing out those reserves. Um, they're, they're one instance away from just zeroing out those reserves. So I wouldn't give too much weight to, you know, like a three hundred percent, three hundred seventeen percent. Larger than reserve or um, annual revenue for zone one, for example, because seventy-six hundred dollars is. Uh, doesn't go far with capital projects. And then I, all of, all of these zones, um, I have, I have a summary slide on sort of a status update. But kind of a state of the zone, if you will, um, for these. But uh, the ones that kind of stand out as being kind of on life support are zone two. Which currently has a, that's what the footnote is a, is addressing. Um, it's, it's loan, it's general fund loan balances now approaching fifty thousand dollars. So it, it goes, it has an operational deficit where um. Is like three or four hundred dollars a year. It, it goes into the red just for maintaining the, the streetscape along Myrtle Avenue there. Um, the other one I wanted to point out here, and I'll repeat this again, on the other slide is Center Way. It has that operational deficit. And so there's, there's time for us to correct that. And, and one of the steps there was increasing the assessment by seven percent this year. That's not going to do it. I think we're going to need several years of, of increases to, to get that to level out, level off. Altman Acres, like I said, they're, they're pretty healthy. They're really healthy. They've got thirty-six thousand dollar reserve balance and, and that was something like. Thirty thousand dollars last year, and so it keeps building. Um, it's dropping down to nine thousand because we're planning to do those improvements. Along Old Redwood Highway. Alright, next slide please. Okay, this is that sort of state of the zones slide, which is new this year. I thought it would be helpful. For zone one, we're just, we're just looking at minimal maintenance, minimal reserves. It's just kind of hums along, doing its thing, looking, keeping it looking nice. Zone two is the one on life support and uh, we've got the fifty thousand dollar general fund loan. We fixed the sidewalks and tripping hazards. Hopefully, we, we don't, we don't foresee not kind of with any more improvements needed for that zone. Those, the sidewalks were. I think the last one, we had the, the maintenance a few years back of all, where we completely replanted and remolded and there ended the, redid the irrigation. Like uh, five or six years ago, and then this one came along with the fixing the sidewalks. But um, I think it barely has enough revenue each year just to pay for their water, the water they use. Um, zone three, four, and five, we're, we're looking at same as zone one. We're just to keep minimal maintenance going on and minimal reserves. And even, even with that minimal level of effort, the reserves are, are not building. They, they stay pretty constant. Six and seven, we've got uh, the re- the revenues are pretty stable. So I think we're, we're starting to, or look at. Uh, revenue in those zones that could support some revitalization, refurbishment of those zones. Uh, eight, that is um, Park Meadows. And so that text there describe, um, repeats what I just said about the project. We do those pathways and decompose granite. And uh, those costs will be, uh, not, not all of those projects fall entirely within that zone. So some of it will be coming from uh, the general fund. Um, but that portion that's within the zone will be paid by that assessment's uh, reserves. So nine is the Centerra Way and uh, it's been, the reserves have been dropping. And so it looks to be depleted in the next two, I think, two years. It's, it's going to go to zero. And to combat that. Uh, I'm looking at, I've uh, solicited. Uh, quotes for getting um, landscape services to switch uh, landscape provider services. To see if there'll be a break given there because we, we, we just got another, we got an update from our current provider. Saying, hey, you know, we're, we're increasing your rates because of uh, our increased costs. So um, staying the course on that zone is, is not. Going to be uh, the way to go. It just keeps us, it makes us picture worse. Um, hopefully, we can get somebody that's a little more um, economical for us. Um, and then uh, zone ten, same, same thing. Um, our zone, their zone reserve is approaching forty thousand dollars. We're getting quotes to refurbish their streetscape. Uh, I, uh, the last line there is just to sort of give a window to people into. Our thinking and how we approach these annual reports. It's a check-in process on the health of each of these zones financially. And um, and the appearance, of course. But each, each time we do this, every year, we see upward pressures on utility costs, contractor costs, energy costs. Everything's creeping up. You know, we put like a five percent inflation factor in there and sure enough, that's it, it. It gets, that's what the actual expenses turn out to be, you know, between four, five, six percent every year. So that's, that's making it really challenging to continue to have a. Healthy, healthy zone balances. Uh, one thing, one, one silver lining, one good piece of news is um. I've gotten a lot of help from the Administrative Services Department and a couple of years ago. Um, the accounting system was revamped. And with a push of a button, we get these summary reports on all of these expenses in these specific categories. And so um, it takes, it takes me about an uh, two hours to, to update those, those tables in the report. And so our costs have gone, uh, been cut in half just from last year to this year. Uh, we don't have this years yet, but. The last years and the prior years, um, it went down by half. So it was instead of ten thousand dollars, the administrative cost that's distributed amongst the ten zones. Uh, went to five thousand dollars and we hope that that, uh, we can keep it at that low level. Alright, so that's the presentation. The next slide is a summary of recommendations. Which is to uh, go ahead and adopt the resolution. Which uh, approves the engineer's report confirming the assessment diagram and it. Diagrams and annual assessment amounts and living and collection of annual assessments for the City of Cattani Landscaping Lighting Assessment District. For zones one through ten pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Well, that's a perfect time to ask the council if anybody has any questions for Mr. Scott. And I see hands from Vice Mayor Harvey and Councilmember Sparks, in that order, please.
Um, thanks for the report, um, Craig. Um. I feel like a broken record here, um, but on Quail Hollow, um, number two zone. The assessments that we collect are only about twelve hundred dollars and the expenses are about thirty-six hundred. And they already owe us money. And I feel like for the last four or five years, we keep saying, we need to do something about it. This is only going to get worse and pretty soon, it's, you know, ultimately going to be, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. They are never going to get, um, you know, out of this if we, if we don't do something. And um, I know I ask every year, but we seem to be reluctant to address that with them. But we cannot continue um, at this pace where we're paying. Um, you know, double what their assessment is in addition to all of these other unforeseen things. Um, so do you have a plan for that?
I, I think that was our, the writing was on the wall when we initiated this back in nineteen eighty-nine. Or nineteen, early nineties and failed to put in the escalation factor. The, it's very unlikely that the residents are going to vote to approve a uh. Including the es- the escalation factor. I think, I think we don't have, our, our, our options are really limited. That, I think that's why you're seeing this come back year after year. Without it being resolved. I, I don't think we have any options here.
Well, I would like us to look at options because I really don't think that it's really very fair. To all of the rest of the districts, nor the rest of the citizens within the community. To keep having to, you know, have this um. Fund being owed to us grow the way it's growing at, at, you know, at some point. Uh, you know, do we just stop maintaining it? Or um, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem quite right the way it is exponentially growing. And that, that there's nothing that can be done. So I, I just would like to see something um, done about that. And I do appreciate, because I have been around long enough that we don't have to do these one by one by one. So. I do appreciate that you've combined those. So, so thank you for that.
We appreciate it too.
I bet, yeah. That was really painful to go through these and adopt these resolutions and read them each one. So thank you for that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is related to, to Vice Mayor Harvey's uh, comments and question. Uh, I, I'm curious to know how, how do we fund maintenance on the landscape on the rest of Myrtle Road? On the other side of the road and then down uh, farther to the east is not part of that district. That's my first question. I'll, I'll take them one at a time if that's okay.
Sure, so. Looking at that diagram, there is a zone seven. That's on the other side. Of uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, you've got zone two, which we're talking about, then zone four. Um, maintains, has some streetscape along Myrtle, if you look at the overall diagram. And then on, but you're talking about the north side of Myrtle and um. The city maintains that. There's, there's a, there's a number of streetscapes around the city. And this is a, a big question I get when I go out and meet with these Assessment District HOAs. Is um, you know, how come some streetscapes were maintained by the city and some were in assessment districts?
So is that just luck of the draw when they were built and whether we had started? Started with this Assessment District program at the time that the development was constructed?
It, it is. I think it took cities a little while to realize that every time they built a house. It was a net loss in their finance, in their budget. Because it costs more to maintain that new infrastructure than they were getting from property tax revenue. Um, so that's when the Landscaping Lighting Assessment District got developed and it kind of was. You know, this is the order of development that, that came about from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and three. And then um, that progression continued when four or five years ago, we um, used another mechanism. Which is the Community Financial District, CFDs. Um, and so we've got uh, the whole city is now in a CFD, so that would be. Um, a- a- anytime a new development comes along, they, they have to get, we condition them to annex into the CFD. So it's, it's a continuing, you know.
Yeah.
The trend, the, the, the theme is the city's trying to make itself whole when new infrastructure comes along.
I can see why the, the residents would be not too excited to vote on increasing their assessment when their neighbors across. The other side of Myrtle aren't paying anything for the same service. I have a second question, totally unrelated. Um. Uh, looking at zone ten, the Altman Acres where there's going to be the planned streetscape improvements. I know it's a very small stretch of road, but I'm wondering if there's uh, room there to. Try to do some um, pollinator-friendly monarch butterfly-friendly uh, plantings when we do that. And maybe, I don't know if the HOA there, uh, the members of that district are. Um, would be open to something like that, but I think it would be great to have some better monarch habitat along the side of Old Redwood.
I think how I would present that to the group is um. Have a, have the quote, have that being a requested additional, you know, alternate on the bid. And um, depending, they would be very responsive to what the price increase would be.
Okay.
Um, I think if it was a wash and it would just be a switch out of plants, they would be a lot more receptive of it. But if it was a cost increase, then I would think it would be a thumbs down. Um, but if we're just swapping out plants, that, that might, I have, um, I'd be willing to put that into the, the proposal request.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
Sorry, thanks, Mayor Landman. That just, the, the last thing that uh, Craig said raised a question for me. So. When you say they would be responsive to the cost, um, so I'm curious about the mechanism and who controls this money. I thought this was an assessment and then the city uses that money to do the maintenance work, but you're implying the HOA has some. Role in spending the money?
It's um, we involve the HOA. In, you know, we kind of consult, uh, well, we involve them in the decisions, not, not that. Uh, it's, it, you, you have it right in that the city is ultimately the one that manages. How um, is kind of the referee on, on how it gets spent. Like we have to have a landscape that's consistent with what is initially described in the originating documents. Um, but I think it's common courtesy to touch base with the HOAs and let them know what our plans are. And how sensitive they are for doing it this year or next year or the following year and um. Kind of what, uh, what the implications are to them on the assessment. So it's, it's a conferring, common courtesy type of. Um, interaction we have with them.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I, that's a little different than the process you, you sort of outlined like. In response to Councilmember Sparks' suggestion. So I, I just think there are. There are a lot of general plan policies that have to do with landscape and pollinator-friendly. And we had a discussion a few meetings ago about uh, you know, becoming a, we didn't, we didn't act on it at that time. So this isn't actual policy or anything, but, but things change over the years. And so to say we need to install the same landscape that was there in nineteen eighty-nine doesn't make sense either. So I'm comfortable with a consultation, but not with, not with an implication that the HOA gets to decide what plans go in. Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, let's see, I'm going to look one more time. I'm not seeing a hand from anybody else. I have no questions at the moment. I think I'll have a comment when we come back. But since we've talked through questions, what I'd like to do next is open up the public hearing and see if we have any comments from members of the public.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Alright, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. See if we have any dis- further discussion before we look to a motion. Anybody have anything they would like to add or say about this? Going once, going twice? Um, yeah, I, I have to admit, I have some thoughts in this. I've kind of. Like my colleague, Vice Mayor Harvey. Worried about this issue for years. We were in a difficult position of being underfunded in the city. And having some assessment districts that didn't have escalatory clauses built in, no role in costs. Um, and as the cost of everything else went forward, it put us in a bind, but we are at least for now in a different place. Uh, I think we really have to. Just make these areas, if, if we can't get people to vote in the majority, and I think that's just incredible. Just make these areas. If, if we can't get people to vote in the majority, and I think that's just incredibly unlikely and hardly worth the trouble. I think we just have to. Say that's the cost of doing business and treat them as city maintained. It's a legacy that we are stuck with because of past, uh. A past action that wasn't adequate for long-term costs, and I think we have to live with that. And as I look at it. I have some comfort in saying that because as I hear the associated costs, while they're. Not insignificant amounts of money as far as what we do as a city on a regular basis with most studies and plans and consultants. It's pretty minimal sounding. And I think. The concept of just going on as we've gone on the past with this, which has resulted in some areas that look. Frankly, in my personal opinion, and I've brought this work before, not very good. And even if people are paying not that much in the tax role, they're still paying in a tax role for an assessment district. And as they look by and all they see is. A lot of dead plants generally and some. Kind of threadbare can bark. That's not the type of city I think that staff wants to. Have Katati be in. I don't think the electives want to see that either. Um. I mean. I just picturing the idea of driving by some nice plantings. On Myrtle and actually during this time of year, seeing some monarch butterflies. That's the type of city I'd like Katati to be able to move to being. Um, and I think. As long as it's a cost that's formidable, and I believe these largely would be, my direction to the future. Not tonight, but to the future. Would be that's where we should go. Uh, we need to in budgeting, sit down, take a look, what does it need? To run all of these correctly, including the ones that can't fund themselves. How do we define what's a good level? Um, what's an unacceptable level? We need that. We need to do that. And then I think we need to just budget and plan for it. Um. If I, if this wasn't my last meeting, I would, this would probably by now, since we've had this discussion for years, I think I'd be voting no on the assess, on the. This public hearing. Um, but since I'm seeing this change happening and hearing these discussions in the council, I'm happy to support it tonight. But at any rate, I wanted to make the comment. I think that's the direction we should go in the future. Um, so, and I see a hand from Vice Mayor Harden.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I would like a little bit more clarification on that. Um, and it really has to do with expectations. So these assessment districts are set up and that it's contractual and there's expectations. The example, Mayor, that you're giving, given is more, uh, philosophical about how we would like our community. To look with, and I agree with you. We want our community to look nice. But my concern is that if we have a contractual relationship with these districts. And all of a sudden we're having to pay for the expectations that are within these. Contracts, then that doesn't give us any leeway to work within our means. That we may or may ha- may or may not have in a given, you know, stretch of years. So I'd like Mr. Scott to speak to that. Is this something where, where we need to get rid of? Some of these districts and then it's really as we can. Um, afford to make these changes versus the expectations that are in these contracts.
Well, what, I, I, I kind of had a reaction to the mayor's statement of voting against this because. This process needs to be followed. I, I think we all understand that to. To, um, um, make these assessments. And so, um, there's about fifty thousand dollars total amongst this, the ten zones. And so if we don't go fol- if we don't follow this process every year to the letter, then we get zero. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Um, your question is what? Councilmember Harvey. Could, if, if these are contractual relationships we have, we, we, you would like us to. Look to see what our, um, options are to. To reopening the contracts and, um. I guess I'm not, not exactly sure what's being asked. It's the.
Vice Mayor Harvey, I, I could also, sorry, sorry Craig, but I, I could also, um, add that. I think, um, I think it's a good discussion to have in the future. What are, you know, what are our expectations for these landscape districts? I think I. I, I would, I would not, of course, recommend dissolving any, um, just because even if they're partially contributing to the costs. Because they're still contributing something to defer, uh, you know, what we would otherwise be spending on the general fund. But, but I mean, y- you are right that there's, you know, that there's an expectation. If you. If you provide any money at all, there's an expectation of service. And where we were before measure S is we had. You know, we, um, let them go because we couldn't, we couldn't spend any more than we were bringing in, um, for obvious reasons. But, um, the conversation I think now is do we want to? You know, knowingly maintain them sort of as a city landscape and just take the assessment as a subsidy to the general fund that we put into it. To maintain it at all of us at a, at a, uh, common maintenance, common level of maintenance. I. I think if you, if you maintain it all at a common level of maintenance, you're not going to probably have. The complaints that we would get all the time from the people that were seeing the landscapes deteriorate. Obviously, but you know, it comes with the recognition that we would have to be subsidized with the general fund, right? So. Anyway, I think it's a, I think it's a, I. I, I guess really what I'm, you know, just to kind of summarize. I would, you know, to your question, I would not recommend dissolving the landscape districts just because. Even though they may not cover all the costs, they do cover some of the costs, which is helpful. And, you know, what level of uniform maintenance we want to take for all the landscape areas are, I think, maybe a good conversation for. The future if we want to. And then we can knowingly. Go into this beyond just district two, which is obviously upstate town.
Well, then, then I think that that, that's what I'd like us to look into because who are we fooling? They owe us fifty thousand dollars. They're never going to pay it. They can't even pay for the lighting and water. So to, to have this report and, and, and act like they're ever going to pay us back. Is seems, doesn't, it, it seems false to me. Um, so we have to, it, it's not working and we have to do something different. Rather than keep ratcheting up that number and what that different. Approach is, you know, I, I let staff, you know, um, decide what that is, but, but this. This is embarrassing, if you will, to have that number ratchet up year after year after year, knowing that it's never going to come down. And I do agree with the mayor that yes, we want the city to look properly. But let's be honest about where those funds are coming from. And, and what the expectations are. And, and that's really. That, that area has to know what the expectations are and we have to come to grips with how it is we're going to. Work with them. A- and that's really what I'm asking because this isn't working. And so.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you know, we're approaching this in different directions, but I think there's a lot you've said that. We agree with the problem we see in front of us. And I want to be clear, if I wasn't. I wasn't saying that I would vote no, or and I certainly wasn't trying to encourage my colleagues to vote no on this tonight as some sort of protest. I was merely indicating that. If this was to go on. As business as usual for years to come, I would be getting to that point. And I'm. I think I'm trying to approach this logically from more of the facts on the ground. We have a bad contract. We have several bad contracts and they're our fault. Uh, we should have known better. We should have, we should have known that these needed to be rolling costs and we didn't. And that's our fault. And the only way out of it would be to get, uh, most of the people that live there to vote in a majority to increase that tax. And I think just knowing people, that's understandably unlikely. And particularly because many of these areas. The landscapes have been underserved for some years. I think our possibility of getting a majority to vote for that are very slim. If that was a direction the council wanted to go in the future, it might be worth the effort, but. Assuming that doesn't work, you only have one other option. You either just do the landscapes right and accept that as the cost of doing business is. Something's expected from cities and a deed right across the street in Myrtle, something the city does, or you let it totally go to ruin and. If economically we had to do that, well, gosh, that would be an easy choice because there's other services we do that are more important. But if we're not in that position, um, then I think we should be looking at what's the best way of doing this. So I meant my comments as perhaps just a. For the future discussion, perhaps the next time we start our budgetary planning, to take a look at this, decide what is the level? Of service, um, what is the look, the best fit we want for this community and how do we provide it? And just plan to do it and focus less in which ones are. Bad contracts and which ones are appropriate ones that have rolling costs and just accept the past and. Take care of the city as best as possible. So forgive me, my last year and being able to weigh in on this. And it's something I've wanted to see improved for years. So sorry to take you all down a rabbit hole. So at any rate, I'm gonna look one more time if anybody else has any comments they'd like to share. Not seeing any hands go up on the list. So with that, uh. I will see if we have anybody that would like to move adopting the resolution for approving the annual engineers report and other actions. I see a hand from Councilmember Moore.
I would be happy to shed a little light on this and put forth a motion here. Uh, resolution to approve the engineers report, confirm the assessment diagram. And annual assessment amounts and levying and collecting of the annual assessments for the Katati. Landscaping and lighting assessment district for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I see what you did there by putting a little light on the lighting district. I like that. So we have a, uh, a, a move by Councilmember Moore. Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Harvey.
Sorry, Ben.
It, it was clear too, not even close. So we will go and see if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. So that concludes item B under, uh. This part of our agenda takes us next to item C, which is a public hearing on outstanding backflow charges assessments. And if we could have our staff resort in that, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, once again, Craig Scott, City Engineer, Public Works Director. This item, we try to track every year with the landscaping lighting assessment district item because it, uh, once again is. Levying assessments against properties, but this time it's for those folks out there that have backflow. Prevention devices that, um, have not. Re- not, uh, paid their invoices for their annual certification. And, um, so owners are giving, uh, notification of the annual certification requirement. And given a choice of finding their own contractor to certify, uh, do the test of their backflow device. Or have the city provide that test and invoice them. Uh, backflow devices, just quickly. All commercial customers are required to have backflow devices because they could have systems, um, equipment on site that could. Uh, push, um, contaminants water back into our system. And then anybody with a pool or a private well similarly are required to have backflow devices. So the city does keep an inventory and tracks these and since it's a, it's a whole program within our water system. Building program to maintain, to make sure that we're compliant. And the customers are compliant with the state requirement to certify these backflow devices. This year we have, uh, forty-three. Customers that did not pay. Um, that's, that's kind of the number it was, I believe, from last year. It's, it's holding at about, uh, forty, fifty folks. Every year. So, um, this is a second trip where to, to counsel on this item. The first was to. Uh, a couple of months ago to, um, have a notice of intent to levy in us these assessments and to set the public hearing. And then in the, in the interim, we went ahead and, um. Made the publications in the newspaper as required by, by state law. Um, so at this point. We're asking for city council to, um, conduct the public hearing. And, um, following that to. Approve a resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges. And directing the levying of assessments for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three property tax rolls.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, I'll ask the council if anybody has any questions for Mr. Scott. Will we open the public hearing? And I'll give you just a second to see if anybody wants to raise your hand. And I'm not seeing that. So I will ask the deputy city clerk if we can open the public hearing, please?
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Okay, let me ask you, Mr. Patterson, then in terms of protest, uh, did we receive pro- sufficient protests or insufficient? Did we receive any protests on this tonight?
There were no protests received.
All right. I would say that's very insufficient. Thank you. All right. Well, so I'll bring it back to council then to see if there's any discussion from anyone. And if there's no hands for discussion, then I'd love to see a hand for a motion.
I would move that we approve a resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges. And directing the levying of assessments on the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three property tax rolls.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Do we have a second for that?
I have a second now.
And a second for Councilmember Moore. Thank you. All right. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. So that's unanimous. Let's bring this back then. And we are moving on, uh, from public hearing. B to public hearing C. And this is a. Public hearing to receive all written notices, uh, for back, establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and the levying of assessments for this year. Mr. Scott, I believe you have this report as well.
Yeah, this report is the next one, which is, uh, very similar, but it's for.
Oh, excuse me.
Sewer, sewer charges.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's easy to run these two together.
Well, it's, it's hard to get to all the pages on the phone too, but you're right. Let's.
Yes.
So let's move to that one. Thank you.
So, um, a- again, this is an item annually where the city has, um, this is its last ditch resort. Mechanism to, um, collect overdue fees. And so these are the, it's, it's one, it's one customer every year. It's the same. Same property that does not pay, uh, their sewer bill. And so what happens then, the, the six payments, um, have a twenty dollar per payment penalty. So there's a hundred and twenty dollars tacked on to their bill. And, um, the city collects their sewer bill by putting it, going through this process and it's, uh, putting it on their property tax assessment. I mean, a question people would have is, well, why aren't, why aren't we seeing water delinquency? And that's because the city has a very effective way to get people to pay their water bill and that is to shut off their water service. And so they come in immediately and pay their water bill. So, uh, but on the sewer side of things. We have sewer only accounts. And so, uh, we don't have meters or valves or anything on their sewer pipeline for obvious reasons. And, um, and so this is some, we, we don't have a hammer except for just to put it on their assessment. And again, this is the, the, the repeat customer. That fails to. Pay their, their sewer bill. So we're forced to do this each year. That, that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Yeah, this is certainly a day Javu moment for you and us every year. I hear you. With that, let's move it to the council though and see if anybody has any questions tonight. I don't see any hands go up. Uh, so let's go right then if we can open the public hearing on the sewer, sewer delinquencies.
If you would like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. And I'll ask just once again, did we receive any written protests? Uh, did we receive sufficient or insufficient protests tonight?
There were no protests received.
Very good. Thank you for that. So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. I see a hand from the Vice Mayor. Very good. Thank you for that. So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. I see a hand from the Vice Mayor.
I'd be happy to make a motion for you. And my goodness, Mr. Scott, I wish that there was some way for us to put some kind of a valve to, um, not have us have to do this every year. But, um, with that, maybe you'll come up with something in the future. I'd like to move to adopt a resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessment on fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on the property tax rolls.
Thank you.
A second.
And thank you, Councilmember Ford, for a second. Uh, we'll ask, and if we can have a roll call vote on this, please.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
And yes. So thank you, everybody. That does complete our four, um, public hearings for tonight and moves us now to item twelve, which is our regular agenda, which we have three items under. We'll start with item eight, and this is our SB thirteen eighty-three recology franchise and waste delivery agreement amendments. And, uh, who's our presenter tonight? Will that be you, Mr. Obed?
Uh, I'll lead it off, and then we have, um, Alex Sawyer with R three that's going to present. And, um, so everyone knows, we also have, uh, Fred Stemler and Nikki Burke with us tonight from, um, Recology to help answer any questions.
I may interrupt for just a moment.
Councilmember Moore, go ahead.
I am going to recuse myself from this particular item due to financial considerations. So I will, um, stop, stop the video and audio.
Thank you very much. Uh, should we have someone text you when we're done?
That would be terrific.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. We'll see you after.
Okay.
Thanks. So, um, in a nutshell, before we start the presentation, the item before us tonight is, um, a couple actions. One would be an amendment to the franchise agreement for, um, waste collection and disposal. And, um, that amendment with recology would do a couple of things. One is that it would revise our franchise to account for the changes in law resulting from SB thirteen eighty-three, which is the, um, the new organic collection law. Also, um, extending the franchise agreement by five years. And then separately, there's an agreement called a waste delivery agreement between the city, Recology, and, um, Republic Services, who is a land, the county landfill operator, which is essentially a waste, um, delivery agreement that all of the cities, Sonoma County, essentially all the cities in Sonoma County, um, are partying to separately. So, um, with that, I will, uh, introduce Alex, um, and, um, Kevin, if you can get that PowerPoint up.
Thank you, Damian, and thank you, Mayor Landman. Uh, good evening, council members. My name is Alex Sawyer. I'm with R three consulting group. Uh, I also have William Michelin with R three is also in attendance this evening. Um, please present, uh, you, to you this evening on SB thirteen eighty-three franchise agreement amendment and the amendment to the waste delivery agreement. I'll go through a brief presentation and any questions I begin to have answered at the end. So next slide, please. So we'll give a brief background on the SB thirteen eighty-three and its requirements, and, uh, we'll review the waste system amendments. And we'll cover the resulting rate increases, rate increase. Uh, next slide, please. So a little bit of background on SB thirteen eighty-three, it's the short-lived climate pollution's act, pollutants act is passed in two thousand and sixteen and started getting enforced at the beginning of this year. It focuses on reducing emissions from organic disposal. And it sets, uh, targets for organics recovery statewide. Um, this built on A, AB eighteen twenty-six, which was, uh, started getting implemented in tw- twenty sixteen, which was, uh, organics requirement uh, for collection on commercial and multifamily units. So this goes, this goes farther and requires all generators, residential, commercial, and multifamily to have organic service. Next slide, please. So the city has, uh, a list of responsibilities under SB thirteen eighty-three. Those are to provide organic collections to all, to establish an edible food recovery program, to conduct outreach and education to the community about the new program. Uh, the city must procure recovered organic products and recycled content paper to close the loop. The city also must secure access to edible food recovery capacity and organics processing capacity moving forward. Um, and, uh, the city must also monitor compliance by conducting route reviews and contamination monitoring. Next slide, please. So, uh, so here's a little diagram about, uh, kind of how the, the different agreements work and facilitate waste collection in Katati and Sonoma. So, uh, so the first, uh, left-hand portion of the slide is has waste collection throughout the city, and that's done directly throughout, through the franchise agreement. Uh, with an agreement between the city and Recology. Uh, the, the, uh, contracts that govern the waste transfer to the central landfill are the waste delivery agreement between the city of Katati and Republic and the franchise hauler agreement, which is between the city of Katati, Recology and Republic. And then on the waste disposal and processing and uh, the master operator students agreement, the, uh, the, the Sonoma County holds with Republic, um, governs that. And then these, uh, prime subcontract between Republic and Recology also determines what happens with that material. So. Um, next slide, please. So the master operating agreement dictates the processing and disposal of material. The existing commercial food waste program is off, offered under the master operating agreement. And, uh, the current system does not currently collect organics and recyclables from all generators as required by SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, amended master operating agreement eliminates the four twenty, four dollar and twenty-one cent gate fee that funded the program and that revenue has to be replaced. Uh, the cost to implement the SB thirteen eighty-three program improvements are addressed in the franchise agreement amendment and associated rate. Next slide, please. The waste delivery agreement requires, uh, the transfer of waste to the central landfill, eliminates the food and dry commercial mixed waste programs offered by the master operating agreement. It has been revised to eliminate the four dollar and twenty-one a ton fee that is currently, or has funded the program in the past. And that will now be adjusted on customer rates through the annual rate adjustment process. This enables more effi- efficient collection of food waste. Next slide, please. Um, so that the franchise agreement amendment adds SB thirteen, thirteen eighty-three compliant programs. And including the rollout of free bin systems to all customers, uh, additional drivers and trucks to provide the service, purchasing of compliant containers and labels, um, conducting route reviews and compliance reviews to ensure customers are separating materials properly. Uh, providing outreach and education to all customers and reporting to CalRecycle on their reporting requirements for the new law. And, uh, additionally with this, uh, franchise amendment, there is a five-year extension to the contract. And rate adjustments will cover additional operating expenses to implement programs. Next slide, please. So this will result in a six point four percent one-time rate adjustment. That'll be effective January first, twenty twenty-three. The rate adjustment included in the draft franchise is included in the draft franchise agreement. And it funds SB thirteen eighty-three compliant residential and commercial collection services. And next slide. And we'll finish and with any questions?
Perfectly. Go to our council, see if anybody has any questions for our speakers tonight. And I'm seeing a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I noticed that one of the components for the, the, um, increased cost was the fuel costs for the additional vehicle to do the compost green waste recor-, um, pickup. Um, and my question was just, does Recology have any, uh, plans to move to electric vehicles for new vehicles that they're purchasing?
We do have members from Recology here, um, so they can try to answer that, um, themselves, or, um, I do not.
I'm. That's true. Is my audio coming through?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is Fred Stemler. I'm the general manager. Uh, we, we, Recology as a whole has been pursuing electric vehicles for some time now. Um, one of the things that is an impediment, uh, to, to rolling these out. Uh, actually, hang on one second. Sorry about that. I got working from home here. So the, um, the trucks essentially aren't capable of completing the route at this point. So we've demoed several models, but they haven't rolled out one to conduct, uh, an entire full day route. So we've got, um, several models that are working their way through, but we anticipate somewhere in the next twelve to twenty-four months, we may see a full route truck available.
But just because the battery capacity is not high enough to?
Exactly. Yeah, it's just with the, the weight of the vehicle and the amount of miles that we cover is the, the cell is just not large enough to complete a full route.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. Good question. Let's see. Anybody else? All right. I'm not seeing any questions at this point, so this might be a perfect time then to go and open public comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, I'll bring it back to the council then, see if there's any further discussion, questions, or anything else from the council. And if I don't see that shortly, then I'll ask if somebody would like to make a motion on this issue.
Happy to make a motion, Mayor, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I thi- I think it's that time.
Okay, uh, I move that we adopt a resolution, one, authorizing the city manager to sign the first amendment to the franchise agreement for collection, disposal, and processing of solid waste recyclables and compostable materials related activities pursuant to chapter eight point oh eight of the Katati municipal code to implement SB thirteen eighty-three and extend the by franchise agreement by five years and to approving the proposed omnibus amendment to waste delivery agreement and franchised hauler agreement.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor Harvey. Do we have a second from anybody in the council?
A second.
And a second from Councilmember Sparks. Thank you. All right. Uh, with that, I just, before we have our vote, I would like to thank R three and Recology for being here tonight. I know it's always difficult at the end of the day to do one more virtual meeting, particularly when we're all working from home, which is not always as easy as we might have thought it would have been some years ago. But it's appreciated to have you here in case any questions arose. And I think just the years of good work we've had together going through these, these processes have brought us to a point where tonight we actually didn't have a lot of questions, but thank you for being here. So with that, I'm going to ask if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Mayor Landman.
Yes. All right. Thank you, council. This completes, uh, item A under our regular agenda. We're now going to go to item B, which is adoption of Katati's budget and capital improvement program for years twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mayor Land, I, I don't know, Damian, can you text?
I, I, I texted him.
Thank you. I just received that text. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing that up, Ben. I should assumed it was being done. Uh, we all know about that. So with that, if we're ready to jump then to, we'll give Councilmember Moore a second to get, uh, back and move to our budget item.
We're ready to go, um, Mayor Leno.
Thank you.
So good, good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public and fellow staff. I'm going to wait for their presentation to pop up. But tonight, uh, as you said, we're going to be presenting for you the approval for the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three as well as the multi-year capital program. Kevin, would you mind advancing the slides, please? Thank you. So our budget process is not just a single document or a meeting, but rather it is a year-long process. Even after the budget is adopted, it is reviewed and updated with council resolution adoptions. And then in November, December, the city manager and the administrative services department develop a plan for the upcoming quote-unquote budget sessions and season. In January, uh, we provide the mid-year report, which provides an update on the, uh, current existing fiscal year budget and where we stand. And then in February through May, there are separate budget study sessions and meetings, which include internal budget reviews, budget study sessions, and this all leads to the budget adoption again. So if you'd like to learn more about the budget process, please see packet page four thirteen as well as the budget video, which is on the city website, as well as the budget online. Next slide. So this year's budget study sessions, uh, started in February fifth, on February fifteenth with the strategic planning session, sessions, which developed the city's objectives and goals. Followed by April nineteenth and May seventeenth, where the numbers were actually discussed for the proposed budgets for all the funds, including the capital projects. Leading to now with the presentation for the adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Next slide. So the key thing at the February fifteenth strategic planning session was the council's review of the city's strategic objectives. This was then revised and brought back for approval on April nineteenth. Changes that were, uh, part of that discussion and revisions that were made were really separating out that climate change as a separate specific goal for the city. And we also revised some key supporting focus items under providing the best-in-class, uh, community services. Next slide. So the most difficult part in providing this full budget, uh, and presentation over the last months or so has been, uh, the moving targets and information to provide about what's really happening in our economy right now. It is a, this is a very brief recap of the economic indicators and everything is really indicating that it's, it's still continuing to be highly vol- volatile. With GD pre-growth looking to decline into twenty-two, twenty-three. And the current unemployment rates are really hitting pre-pandemic levels. So we'll go a smidge deeper into the effects of these and what, what's playing into these in the next slide. But first I do want to point out that in the packet on page four twenty-two, it provides really a kind of more of a summary, but detailed summary of an economic outlook and how those considerations went into our budget development process. Next slide. So some key assumptions that impact our economic environment, including global, national, uh, considerations that really can be felt here in Katati. Um, so inflation, the key impacts from the federal, uh, fed tools that are being used to combat inflation to increasing, um, uh, interest rates, the legislative impacts that might be coming down the pike. How do we, um, build around those assumptions, like what, what might be happening with gas tax holidays? You know, how is that going to impact our infrastructure? These are things we have to assume and, and build out for, but we really never know what's going to happen. We still have linger of, lingering effects as to, as we are, uh, recovering from COVID nineteen. And these are kind of things like inventory shortages, staffing shortages. And then we also have the global sanctions against Russia and its impacts on commodities like gas, which are currently absolutely felt here at home here in Katati. Next slide. So down to again, the key fund for Katati, which is the general fund. This is a primary fund used by the city for all of our government really activities. These accounts for everything that is not enterprise, our water and sewer, or our special segregated funds that are for special purposes. We went into depth in the development of the general fund budgets during the study sessions on April nineteenth and May seventeenth. And really, there's no significant changes since then, uh, that are being proposed for adoption at this point in time. Next slide. And again. So highlights of the general fund budget are a slight decline in operating revenues of approximately thirty thousand dollars. This is due to conservative budgeting and of uncertain charges for service fees. We continue to have a balanced, balanced operating budget with a net surplus of one point three million. And accumulated surplus is, is then rolled in and being used to fund those capital projects, which in turn are estimated to receive an additional matching grants of close to one point two million for the budget year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide. So other highlights are, we really are meeting and exceeding the required reserve of the twenty-five percent for both the estimated budget year of twenty-one, twenty-two, as well as the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal years. Adjusting for the budgeting, uh, of the ARPA funds, uh, the operating revenues are estimated to increase from the adopted budget by seven point five percent from the estimated twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And, and then seven. and then 7.2% for the proposed 22, 23 budget. On the opposite side, for expenditures, staffing cost is really consistent with the adopted budget that we had for 21, 22. And we will further talk about the actual estimated actuals for expenditures are different due to our one-time UAL distribution for ADP. The major expenditure changes for the budget year are related to, again, the contract services for insurance, the new debt service for the lease debt, the streets work, as well as the one-time the election expense this fall. Next slide, please. So as you can see, there is less than a 0.5% change in the operating revenues for the proposed fiscal year 22, 23. The increase in property tax and sales tax and other taxes are offset by the decreases in the charges for services. And these charges for services are really uncertain revenues year to year, because they're based on the developments that happen at that point in time. And we currently don't have any solid, we know this is being dug up and built right now. And so we can't bank on those revenues being in, as well as there was a decrease in other revenues. And this other revenues had a one-time receipt of a deposit refund of approximately $200,000. So that is a one-time receipt. We don't budget for one time off things that have no expectation in the future. Alternatively, we are anticipating slightly then better investment returns as interest rates increase. And so some markets and cities, we're actually seeing them rebound on those returns. Next slide, please. So overall, this forecast budget is based on the best available information for today. Estimates, again, that's my favorite word, are conservative. We're making sure we're trying to keep it as solid as possible. A little bit of making sure revenues are reasonable, and the expenses as well are reasonable. The sales tax measure G, which make up approximately 60% of the general fund operating revenues, are projected based on a 2% growth due to the strong demand for goods at a higher price currently. Again, we don't know what's going to happen, flip into a recession, people's spending habits change or reduced. But this is a conservative estimate of what is being net by our community right now. And we can look at that as our key industries listed here. Now for our property taxes, which are approximately 20% of the general fund operating revenues, we do have an estimate of increasing 2% over the prior budget due to the completion of higher tax-valued properties, mostly Cassing Ranch, and the additional expected 2% from the assessors' applied CPI. Cannabis tax is increasing due to the additional retail permit we're seeing hopefully coming online within the early of 22, 23. We're going to expect the continuation of this no-mistake dispatch agreement, as well as, again, mentioned in the previous slide, we do have a reduction of other revenue due to that one-time payment. Next slide. So flipping over to the operating expenditures. So these are the key items that really affect all of the departments across the operating expenses for the general fund again. So nothing different has come out from compared to our strategic planning sessions. All departments were affected by the CalPERS additional discretionary payment, as well as we're still continuing to propose that lump sum payment in the beginning of fiscal year 22, 23, in order to save that 3% additional costs by springing them out throughout the year. Secondly, we have the allocation of contract services, which are based on the department's proportion of the FTE. And so as those contract services increase, the allocation to the different departments increases by that amount, and so those contract services increase. Third, we have the rising cost of insurance, which was noted at, I mean, 52% increase from our prior year, which is significant. Third, we also have the full employment budgeting. So we do use in our budgeting to, again, be conservative, that we estimate that everyone here, their position is full, it's filled full-time. We don't build in gaps based on turnover or recruiting timelines or those types of things. Next slide. So operating expenditures by department, the major adjusting item is that UAL ADP of just under $5 million. Adjusting for this, the total change in expenditures is around 9.5% or an increase of $767,000. More information on the detailed department budgets are available on packet pages 453 to 494. And these department pages also include the department or charts of proposed projects for fiscal year 22, 23. All of also was a part of our strategic planning sessions. And we'll go a little bit farther into detail as to what the specific changes were in each department on the next slide. So to summarize those financial changes by department, the city manager's department continues to have the inclusion of the public information services. They do have that addition of the election charges for 22, 23. We build an estimate of what we think it's going to take for election costs for the year and make sure it's included, and that is where it is included in the city manager department. They also have a little bit of a flux within their personnel, where we have the reduction of the city clerk that is going to be offset slightly by the administrative assistant position. The administrative services department is primarily increasing due to a budgeting for a new accountant, as well as we've had a open intern position that we hope to fill this year. The community development changes primary due to additional part-time permit tech that will be put into their department. The public works departments changes are primarily due to the increased dues and subscriptions and that allocated insurance. So again, when you have more FTE, when you have a larger expense and you're allocating more of that expense, it impacts that department a lot more. As well as they now have the operational funding for the Rhonda Flooding Ranch for the second year, as that continues to grow. Next slide. Onto the police services. This includes significant continued investment in technology services, which are primarily provided by the Public Safety Consortium, and the additional cost of training now that training is continuing to ongoing, travel to training, and and the offsetting overtime to make sure we're running that 24/7/365 operations with the required manpower without reducing that training. The other significant expense again is that allocation they have, because they are 24/7/365, they have the most FTE. So when you have a large expense, they get a larger piece of that larger expense. The recreation department, so the rec desk annual software contract renewal, so this is a piece of it. And with that contract renewal, they also have banking fees, because you get to pay for your recreation classes, your camp fees and everything else through this rec desk service. And so they, of course, charge those big fees. And so if that becomes more active, those banking fees also become a little bit more of an increase in expense. Next slide. So those are really the key points of the operating revenues and expenses. The other main component of the general fund are those non-operating expenses, revenues, and transfers in. The transfers in are our standard COPS grants, Prop 172 funds, which are brought in from a special revenue fund to cover some of the PD expenses. Again, really doesn't cover much. It's a it's a little bit in the bucket, but it's it is something we make sure we transfer in to cover those. The transfers out are primarily for capital projects and grants capital projects, as well as replenishment for costs within the successor agency fund, as well as funding for that key nine. Next slide. So capital projects in the multi-year plan. It is included within packet pages 667 to 872. And I should be referring everyone to all of these documents are all, you know, non-document but are available on our website that is fully manageable, manipulatable. You can pull your own budget reports as well in any specific detail you want. And so the capital projects is a physical document that could be over 200 pages. But if you want something specific on the individual project, you want to look at it a little bit deeper, look at the pictures a little bit better, you absolutely should check out the portal for our city budget as well as the capital projects online. So there's also an amendment to the pages that provided online, because there were two projects in future years that were previously excluded, so I wanted to make sure those were pointed out. So for the budget, we'll be really just focusing on the projects for just the first fiscal year, because that's the budget that we're adopting this year. Next slide. So for grants matching, we have both the streets project for approximately 2.9 million, as well as the Katati Park project for 2.4 million. Again, more details in the scope of these projects are within those multi-year capital plan. Next slide. Other sturdy projects include work on parks, which is the Pocket Park and Putnam Park. And then our significant bit of work is all going to be done on streets. Not that parks are not getting a big chunk of work done, they absolutely will. But streets are where we have a total of 7.7 million just in our capital projects, streets work, plus that 2.9 million work in that grant matching fund for a total of $10.5 million worth of street work that we are proposing to keep moving forward. Again, this does also include other key things. We lump in the streets, but it's pedestrian safety, bike pad, the bench at Old Redwood Highway 116, gateway signage. So anything that's tangential to a street is a street project, not just the the round that you drive over with your car. There's a lot of other pieces to it as well. Next slide, please. So other key projects also include the civic center windows repairs for our building projects, as well as we already discussed about the LLAD projects that we are coordinating as well. And not included within the multi-year capital program, we did want to make sure we highlighted that even embedded within the general fund, just as a part of our additional maintenance and work for improvements, we do have additional proposed parks and street scape refurbishments that are included within the parks, as well as street maintenance within the general fund. So those are both for $35,000 each. Next slide. So that's really the piece on the general fund. The special revenue funds are these other funds that account for legally restricted restricted or earmarked for special purposes. These special revenue funds are managed by multiple different departments as outlined in this slide. Next slide. So overall revenues, the primary contributors for these special revenues are taxes, like parks measure M taxes, streets measure M, gas tax. These are all special revenues that are supposed to be used for a special purpose. The other key are other revenues, like development fees for funds like inclusionary housing, affordable housing, parking lieu, traffic mitigation, as well as other grant revenues like the COPS LISA, like we just spoke about in the last slide. So next slide. So this slide is really takes those same revenues, so looking at them from their sources. And now here's actually what those different pieces are. Again, you'll see the gas tax, that's the tax piece of it, that's the contributing for that piece. The public safety, that's that SLESA COPS grant, RMRA, another sales tax, and parks measure M. So this is a breakout by those funds. So this is where those revenues are by those special revenue funds. Next slide. So for the operations of these funds, primary primarily, they go to contributions to the or transfers out for our capital projects. So that's the key part of that there. And so this either goes into the grants fund where they're transferred to, so that we can use those and leverage them for grant matching programs, if they meet that special revenue requirement for the expenditures, or they go to also our capital projects funds if they meet those. So this would be like our gas tax fund would go to help support our streets, street maintenance work, and those are in our capital projects for streets. So these are those transfers out to fund those projects. They also have direct contract services. So for inclusionary housing, access bond proceeds, those have specific contracts for those economic development purposes or those other purposes, but that is a little bit smaller than those direct transfers out. Next slide. So after special revenue funds, we have our internal service funds. There again, with no significant change since our budget budget study on May 17th, and details can be found on packet pages 609 to 615. Overall, the city has two internal service funds, the vehicle maintenance and compensated absences fund. The internal service funds for the vehicle maintenance, it's to provide that ongoing plan for replacement or repairs and maintenance of our fleet. The continued investment for 22, 23 is for approximately $361,000 for the replacement to police interceptor SUVs potentially, evaluating what type of make model, what's going to work. These things are not something that we call someone up and and order a piece of equipment, you know, next day. It's something that we always bring back to council to make sure we meet the threshold for what is required for that replacement. And so that's something we would be discussing in a future item. We still also have a punting vehicle that's just been on back order for public works for over a year now. So that is still included within this adopted budget. Alternatively, for the compensated absences fund, there's not a significant change, except for the balances are increased to address the estimated changes in salaries and benefits. Next slide. So last but not least is the enterprise funds for water and sewer. So these are used to account for the operations that are similar to a private business enterprise, where the intent is to sell a product, a good, at cost, and provide it as a service to the general public on a continuing basis, and we finance it through the use charges. Next slide. So the overall highlights for the enterprise funds, again, they maintain, they have a higher threshold for reserves for their operating expenses, and that's 33%, and both of them do so. The rate change study that was adopted 614 is being implemented and is included within the proposed budget, and will be implemented for bills starting as that have start dates as of 615. We do make sure also that these are based on conservative revenue and expenditure estimates correlating with our rate study, as well as continued focus on infrastructure improvements and preservation of our existing systems. Next slide. For water, the revenues are budgeted to increase based on the adopted fees or the rate study, with no significant change again, and the connection fees based on on future developments that are in the works currently. The proposed capital project improvements include this data server upgrade relocation, as well as the P1 air and replacement. The changes for operating expenditures are similar to the general fund. Plus, we have the water conservation programs which we see ongoing. The drought is still existing. We're going to continue to fund water conservation efforts. We also have the water agency increase rate, as well as our debt service back to the general fund for their portion of the UAL ADP. Next slide. For the sewer fund, it is very much consistent with the water fund, where the revenues are increasing in line with the rate study. No significant connection fees, capital projects. We have the West Year Avenue sewer replacement project, and the changes in the operating expenditures get that increase in insurance, the wastewater treatment, as well as that debt service back to the general fund for the UAL ADP. Next slide. So in conclusion, the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 budget really prioritized our goals and objectives of community engagement, long-term vitality, best-in-class service. And we will hope to include more goals as our budget rolls out more. We'll continue to strive to implement more actions towards climate change and equality. We have a balanced operating budget and requirement for each one of the general fund operating as well as water and sewer. The operating expenditures do not exceed the conservatively estimated operating revenues. We have significant investments in deferred capital projects. I mean, talking about over $10 million in streets is is a lot of effort in a single year. So even with that, we feel like this is a fiscally prudent budget with general fund reserves up to 35, or sorry, excuse me, 53%. with general fund reserves up to 35 or sorry, excuse me, 53%. So staff are really committed to continuing to exercise prudence and integrity and provide as much transparency and accountability. And I think that's a good reflection of the huge amount of work that the administrative services department did in generating this budget and making sure it was online and available. And now it could be something that anyone can go through and review and see the detail on how we got to the numbers that we did. Next slide, please. So tonight, we're looking for the adoption of the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2223 budget as well as the updated multi-year capital improvement plan. And I'm really happy to take any questions.
Did we lose our mayor?
It appears that we have. Oops, here he comes.
Can you hear me okay? Sorry about that. So I'm not sure where I dropped off, but it seems to pick me back up. So I was saying, I saw no cops, no questions come up from the council. I believe that's correct. So this is a perfect time to go to public comment if we could.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you. All right, I'll bring it back to the council and see if there's any final comments. And I do see a hand from Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Angela, thank you for that comprehensive budget. I really appreciated the narratives that started on the 400s, somewhere around there. But those were good because that kind of goes into what the philosophy is and what we're trying to do. So I thought that was excellent work on there. I do have a question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate venue for that, but I'm wondering what it would, what it would take to increase our spending on code enforcement? And how that might be addressed?
Do you want me to respond right now? And Damian absolutely can chime in. I mean, if there was an item that that needed to be brought, just like any budget amendment, when we have a specific contract in mind, if we have a significant effort in mind, we do bring those to council for that budget amendment, as I talked about in the budget process. So if there is something significant, then that's what we would bring to council through staff and do that budget amendment at that time to make sure they had the appropriate resources for what they need to operate.
Yeah, I would just add that. So if there's, you know, if there's specific concerns that the council has, then we can look into what the issue is and we can report back. Is it a budgetary issue or is there some other issue at play there?
Thank you. And again, excellent work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilmember Vice Mayor Harvey, I see you next. I also see Councilmember Sparks hand up. So we'll go Vice Mayor and Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Again, Angela is a wonderful budget. It took me hours and hours to go through it. I really appreciate the details. I hope others appreciate them too. I particularly like in each of the sections, you don't just present it one way, you present it multiple ways. Because I know sometimes people get it one way, but not the other. So I find that very helpful. And I really like the section with the capital projects because it gives you a visual, it gives you a description, it gives you the year, it gives you, you know, the maintenance, where the funding's coming from. And I think that that's really helpful for many folks that that wonder what it is that we're doing with all of these funds and how it is that we're trying to improve our community as best we can with the funds that we have. So I really appreciate the budget. So thank you.
If I can jump in real quick, I would love to take credit for the capital project section of the budget book, but I cannot. Craig and his staff worked a tremendous amount in our software in order to build that. And we absolutely, Damian and I, review it, go through it, make sure, you know, everything's appropriate and budgeted for. But they did an amazing job. And I can't, I definitely have to credit my staff as well for the amazing detail around the whole budget because it, as much as detail there is in there, it takes more than one set of eyes. So Neil absolutely worked a lot, especially with the rest of the department heads and making sure that everything was was as well put together as we possibly could.
Well, my thanks extended to all the staff that had a finger in it because it's very well received. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I'll echo what my colleagues are saying. Just really appreciate the amazing attention to detail and it's all really clear. I always wonder why the pictures of the council members are in the are in the budget. And I think your picture ought to be in there and the people who actually did all the really hard work on it. Anyway, I did have one question slash comment for the city manager's office. I was looking at the list of projects or objectives on packet page 460. And I had been hoping to see a study to assess our digital infrastructure, including broadband coverage and cell phone reception. This is something we had discussed during strategic planning. And I see it sort of missing from this list, so I wondered if we could just put that back on there. I don't know if Damian wants to answer to that.
Sure, yeah, strategic planning we had talked about. Looking into that, and we hadn't really been fully formed as to what that would be, but looking into the broadband coverage in Katati and whatever that means in terms of studies or staff effort, it's, there has been some, there is some general budgets that aside for whatever that might be, but it's a longer answer than you probably wanted. You just asked if you could add it, and that's, I'm sure easy enough.
Yeah, and I guess the way I had been envisioning whatever it might be would be to figure out how to do some sort of assessment so we could, so we could have a baseline of where we're at today in terms of are there inequities and which neighborhoods have good broadband coverage and which don't. I mean, I've heard of businesses leaving Katati because they don't have sufficient high-quality broadband, things like that. And certainly as I was campaigning for city council, a number of constituents expressed to me that they're really concerned about the poor cell phone coverage and that it's an issue during a wildfire emergency. So, yeah, I was looking for, just because, whatever that may be, what I thought we had discussed in strategic planning was doing some kind of assessment. So, yeah, if we could put that back on the list, that would address my concerns.
That's absolutely a part of the resolution is to make those those small changes to the budget so we can find the final language with Damian and get that out.
Great, thank you.
All right, and we'll see if there's any more questions. I'm not seeing any. I will just share my colleagues' appreciation for the detailed and certainly for the varied ways of looking at this data, and I agree that is helpful. But one thing that really jumps out for me too, that I know we've moved in this direction for the last few years, and I think to an even greater degree this year is the really detailed history. I think you would ask perhaps a person from the outside would say, why do you need a history of the community with the budget? But somehow for me, I think it really, really provides a great context for the community and it helps you understand why we have the budget we have and how we got here. And so I just think all of that together is a document, maybe indeed a very long read, but it's a very valuable one. So again, thanks to you and everybody who had a hand in this document. We appreciate it. So with that, if I have no more commentary questions from any of my colleagues, I would be looking for a motion then to adopt this resolution tonight. And I see a hand from Vice Mayor Harvey.
I would be very happy to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the City of Katati fiscal budget for fiscal year 2022, 23, and the corresponding updated multi-year capital improvement plans and incorporating Councilmember Sparks' comment on the assessment for coverage for broadband and cell service.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Do we have a second for that?
Second?
And ask everybody not to be shy. Thank you, Councilmember Sparks. Very good. All right, so we have a first and second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
Yes. So that carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, again, for this tonight. And we'll move on to our last item on our regular agenda. Item C, which is a letter of support for SB 940. I believe this is written by City Manager Obit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, member of the council. First off, I just want to correct something real quick. I had a moment of dyslexia, I think. I said SB 490 on the title. It's actually SB 940. So yeah, so apologies about that. So real quick, some background, I did, you know, normally we check in with CalCities on what their position is on various trending legislation. They had, when in advance to this council meeting, we had checked in with them and asked them well, they had a, they'd had a basically a watch position, which means they haven't taken the position either way. But I did check in with CalCities and they said that they that they support it, they just hadn't gotten to drafting the position letter on this particular piece of legislation. So this is way of background, that is where CalCities stands on this. And with regard to the the proposed legislation, existing state law exempts new mobile home park construction from rent control. And this was enacted by the state back in 1989. And basically, what it did is it defined new construction as a space initially held out for rent on or after January 1st, 1990. So any spaces basically held out for rent after that date, initially held out for rent after that date in 1990, would be exempt from our mobile home rent control in any other city in California that has a rent control ordinance for mobile home parks. So this law, the proposed law intended to correct that by by the obvious inequity that that would create in mobile home parks because new construction, because it was fixed by 1990, spaces or parks are still considered new, even if they're more than three years old. And so you have some older spots that have rent control and newer ones that don't. So the proposed bill would add a new definition of a term, new, which is called new mobile home park construction, which would apply to all new parks held out for rent on or after January 1st, 2023. And these new parks would be exempted from local rent stability ordinances for 10 years in order to allow owners to recover initial investment costs and determine appropriate rent levels. But then when new spaces are added to any, but if new spaces are added to any existing mobile home park, they would be immediately eligible and subject to rent control. So in a nutshell, that's what this proposed legislation would do is it would remove the exemption for existing spaces and any new mobile home parks that are created. It would give the owners of that park 10 years to recoup their initial investment cost, but then would, they'd be subject to rent control. And attached, you also have a letter from a local resident regarding this proposed legislation. And if the council adopts a motion authorizing the mayor to send out a letter in support of this bill, then the support letter, I'd imagine, would be very similar in content to the one that was attached. But I would be happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
All right, I'll see if anybody on the council has any questions for Mr. Obit. I'm not seeing any hands at the moment. I do see a hand from Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Thank you, Damian, for that information on that presentation. There was one clarification that I was hoping to get. And in the background, when you talked about due to a court settlement agreement, rent stabilization was placed on the ballot and was ultimately repealed here in Katati. I was not aware that that was actually from a court settlement. My understanding is the existing council at the time, with the urging of some landlords, put that back on the ballot in 18, in 1998, or whatever the year was. 1998. Are you familiar with that?
I'm familiar with, you know, what you described as being the reason, just in preparing the staff report and the ordinance and their mobile home rent control ordinance, there's a prologue to the actual legislation that describes kind of how the mobile home rent stabilization ordinance came to be. And that was just the language that's in the staff report was just lifted from that. I don't, I don't know if that's correct or not. That's what's in the ordinance language. It's like a recital essentially.
Well, and and this one was near and dear to my heart because at the time I was campaigning to not repeal the rent control. And of course, now we're in a situation that we have now without it. So thank you for the clarification on that.
Yeah. All right, let's see. Thank you, Mr. Moore. All right, let's go to public comment and then we'll bring it back.
If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Every time I grab the phone to stop it from falling over or move a page, it seems to want to mute itself. Apologies and thank you. All right, so I'll try and make this quick. Basically, the reason I asked for this come tonight was simply to correct a 30-year-old loophole and provide the protections that we all intended to happen here. So that was the goal here. One additional piece of information I can give the council to back up this city manager's presentation is that we did revisit this last week, I believe, on our last legislature meeting, last Friday, and we did agree to send unanimously to send a letter of support for SB 940. So that is happening as well. So I thought I would just share that. But with that, I thought it would be a good direction for this. So let's see if we have anybody else that has any comments or questions on this. And I'm not seeing any, perhaps, and if anybody willing to make a motion on this.
I would move to adopt a motion authorizing the mayor to send a letter of support for SB 940. I would second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey, and thank you, Councilmember Moore. And I would also ask perhaps if we do wind up revisiting in the future, as I'd asked earlier, our ordinance, perhaps we can clean up that language because I think Mr. Moore's point about remembering the past is important because we learn from it and it informs what happens in the future. So with that, we do have a motion. We have a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes, and I would also hope that we would support this further down the road in assisting these residents. Thank you.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
A definite yes. Thank you, council, for your support on that. So we're moving forward. We have completed our regular agenda. We are now to the city manager's report. So Mr. Obit, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Well, since we won't be, well, we will be technically meeting before the 4th, but the last city, regular city council meeting before the 4th. Just a reminder that it is dry out there and all fireworks are illegal in Katati. So we're going to be continuing to push out that message in advance of the Fourth of July because we definitely do not want to start any fires in our neighborhoods. And then just to let the council know, we are currently, one of the, just talking about capital projects, one of the streets projects is a street preservation project, and that's bidding right now for later this summer. So we'll be having some street preservation work going on around the city with the council approves the agreement. street preservation work going on around the city if the council approves the agreement later in the year. The Pocket Park and McGinnis Marsh Pathway project is underway, and we expect construction to start probably in July. And as you know, that's the new pathways from McGinnis to Marsh and Lincoln, for the bridge that goes to Lincoln. And then making some improvements at the Pocket Park area, including benches, colored lights, bottle, water filling station, and some pathways there. We also have the urban ag ordinance or urban agricultural ordinance, as you all know, coming up on Thursday. It's a workshop just to get input from the council and the community. And that's 7:00 PM this Thursday, June 30. That agenda is also published, if anyone's interested in that. And then Kids Day is coming up on July 9, and this year's theme is Peace, Love, and Kattati, where we're celebrating the 60th decade, involving things, peace signs, music, and lots of tie-dye. So if you have any tie-dye, you can break it out for that day. And it's going to start, as usual, free pancake breakfast at Church of the Oaks and the parade through downtown, a talent show, other live entertainment, and our famous diaper derby and the winning, where the winning baby gets the Kattati crawl onesie, and that's a much sought-after piece of clothing for babies. Pie eating contest, relay races, and a lot of different vendors, and lots of things for kids. Also, just to save the dates, Farmers Markets is already underway on Wednesdays, June through September, 4:30 to 7:30 at La Clawsa Park. Just last weekend, the Chamber held the Kattati Music Festival in the park, and I heard that went well. We also have Soco Market, which we've already had two of them this year, and another one coming up in August. National Night Out's coming up on August 2. The Accordion Festival, August 20 through 21. We have movie nights in the park. The next one coming up is on August 2 with National Night Out, and then also September 23. We have Kattati Candyland Trick or Treat that we're looking to schedule right now, and then, of course, as we get into the holidays, the regular holiday events in December. So all this is on the city website, but I'd encourage you to start calendaring those days, so that's, if you are interested, you can attend any of those. We also are holding summer camp each week through August 11. If you have children that want to attend that camp, sign up now. And we are now in our second week of farm camp at the Veranda Fleddy Ranch, where children learn all about the farm and chores, such as feeding and checking on animals, working in gardens, learning about fruits, flowers, vegetables, and artwork. We have tours of the Veranda Fleddy Ranch each 1st and 3rd Saturday through the summer, starting at 10:00 AM. And then we offer additional additional camps, including Encanto Theater Camp, Matilda Theater Camp, Encanto themed gymnastics camp throughout the summer, and a variety of rec programs, including kids pickleball, which is newer. And funny enough, I, so it's kind of tongue-in-cheek, I joke so much with my wife about pickleball being the fastest-growing sport in the country. For Father's Day, I got a pickleball paddle set. Anyway, serves me right for joking with my wife like that. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'll be the first to congratulate you, City Manager Obit, in your new application of being a pickleball wizard. Congratulations on that. We'll see if we have any questions from the council. No one, not even with the pickleball? All right. Thank you tonight, Mr. Obit. That brings us to our next item, which is city council member reports. And I'll see if any of my colleagues have anything to report out for us tonight. Councilmember Vice Mayor Harvey, hand up first. Please go ahead.
I have a couple of things. One, I attended the ABAG annual meeting where the budget was approved, and they were able to approve the budget and get it as balanced as they could, but they do have some structural deficit issues that they will be working on, and they have to resolve those. So more to come on that, but that was interesting. The second thing was the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. This is kind of important for everyone. As everyone knows, we lost a few years ago Sonoma compost. And we have been unable to, you know, get another vendor that's been willing to do that. And then we were approached this last week by Coal Creek Compost, who is having business difficulties and are at risk of also closing. And as you might imagine, with all of the pressure being put on us because of SB 1383, we, and that's the collective "we" in the state of California, cannot really lose any more composting facilities. Because they're hard, once you lose them, they're very hard to get back, like many things. So anyways, we were approached by them. We've been working with them since the 90s. They have kept their rates very low for us, and they've asked for a a midterm contract adjustment to move their fees. Originally, they had asked us for much more. They had originally asked us, right now they're at $41, and they wanted us to look at increasing to 66. And we basically said, no, that's above the state average and above what we're paying for everything else. And so at the very last minute, they came back in and said, could we go as high as 47? Which we will have staff working with them. We could not approve that, because we didn't have that. But they are looking to shore up their business plan, and they're working with CalRecycle to look for funding and some other areas. Apparently, they got hit pretty bad with some of the collapse of the cannabis, because they provided a lot of their compost material to the growers. So they lost a big portion of where they sell their compost. So it doesn't, long-term, help them if we go down this route to approve them for that increase, but it's important, since we have such a long relationship with them. And the difference in this rate is really net neutral for the ratepayers, because if we had to take what's going there and send it to either NAPA or Redwood Landfill, we would pay more in transportation costs, so it's it's kind of a net wash from a ratepayer perspective. So we will be looking at that at our next meeting. But I thought you should all be aware of that, because it really does impact our ability to have a composting facility that we can send our stuff to. We have good staff at the agency that has been able to work within the contracts we have in case they do go under, so that we have capacity at the other facilities. So they've done a great job with that, but I thought you should all know about that. Sorry for the longness, but I thought you should be aware.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. No, that's an important one and concerning to hear.
Yeah. It was very concerning.
Yeah, no, I can imagine. You certainly have some difficult jobs in some of your assignments. I appreciate what you do. Let's see if anybody else has anything for us tonight. I'm not seeing any hands go up right away, so I do have one brief thing to mention. I was invited on the 22nd to virtually attend a Safe Cities Joint Announcement, a rollout, if you will, that highlighted some of the new policies related to gas station bans, as we discussed tonight and begun enacting. So I was there along with mayors and representatives, of course, from Sonoma County. We know this started here, got kicked off almost out of the blue in Petaluma, and then moved to our cities. But it's actually going other places now. We had representatives from LA who are looking at this. Bethlehem, New York is taking a look at this. British Columbia, we had a representative from Lomax Valley Regional District who was there. So it seems to be gaining quite a ground. As we know, here in Sonoma, we have Petaluma, Ronard Park, Sebastopol, now Kattati, with Santa Rosa and Windsor Development. So that's six of our nine cities essentially on board already. And I'm pretty hopeful that the others will follow. The county might take longer, because they just have a bigger, more complex problem to really assess this thoroughly and make sure they have adequate coverage in every area of the county. So that's a little more challenging, but hopefully we'll get everything there. So I just wanted to share that. And I did mention to everybody, I thanked our colleague from Petaluma, Linda Fisher, for essentially starting this idea through her actions. And I did thank Councilmember Ford as well, and mentioned that he was the one that brought this to our attention, at least asked for it first on the city council here. So that was a good thing overall, and I thought people might like to hear about it. So with that, I see no other hands going up. We will go back. Excuse me. There we go. That completes that and brings us to information.
I do see Councilmember Moore has his hand up.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Sparks and Mayor Landman. I know you're having some technical issues, but I just wanted to indicate that I did work the Kattati Music Festival on Saturday, and that was very well received and very successful. So that was a good project, and that's all I wanted to add. Thank you very much.
It's not that difficult. The problem is I can either see your faces and the stuff on the screen, or the hands and your names, so so it's helpful. If you have a comment, get your hand up early, because I'll be able to see it, because if I then go back to the screen for any reason, I can miss you unfortunately too easily. And since this has happened twice this year, I wouldn't be surprised if it happens again. I don't know what the internet gods are doing with my Wi-Fi reception, but fortunately, the phone is working. So with that, we will move now to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, I'll ask the city manager for item 16, if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
All the information that was posted after the agenda was initially posted is already been discussed in the various items, so nothing yet.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Obit. All right, then this brings us to item 17, adjournment. So if, without any objection, we are adjourned at 9:10 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your help in getting through a long evening, but a very good slate of work, and I look forward to seeing you all next time. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. 880 pages in just over three hours is pretty good.
I would think so.
It took me a lot longer than that to read it.
Oh, yeah.
The amount of time the consent takes on our agenda doesn't reflect the amount of time to read it.
That's right.
Well, the good news, this is the exception relative to the rule, and we'll hold on to that positive thought. Take care, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.